Community interest and so many people participating. And a special thank you to everyone who is planning to speak. People have sent in comments by email or other means. There was some really interesting information in the reading. Make sure we get those on the website for everyone. So, we're going to do this a couple of things. First, I want to turn it over to Councilmember Garner, Mayor Pro Tim Holstich, who have been liaisons working to set this up to sort of frame this a little bit. And then I'll come back just with a couple of comments about breaks and turn it over to the city clerk to discuss how we're going to handle public testimony and input. So with that, Councilmember Garner and Mayor Pro Tim Holstich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to welcome all of you today. I'm grateful that you're all here to take part in this conversation and also receive written comments. And I know just people reaching out as well to all of us about their experiences. It's really important that you're all here and able to let us know what your experiences have been in Palm Springs. We know that there's a history, but what's happening now? And so I want to just let all of you know that this is a time for the city council and the city staff to listen to what's going on. And I really want to encourage all of us to do just that, to really hear what people are saying, what our community is telling us, and to save any extra comments for our council meeting next week. That way, we can really take the time to think about it and reflect before we decide next steps. I also want to recognize that we lost two civil rights leaders yesterday, Reverend C.T. Vivian and Congressman John Lewis. It's, I think, a very emotional time for a lot of people. And I hope that their legacies continue. But I want to just read a quote from John Lewis to kind of help center us in this moment and in this discussion that we're about to embark on right now. "Do not get lost in a sea of despair. Be hopeful, be optimistic. Our struggle is not the struggle of a day, a week, a month, a year. It is the struggle of a lifetime. Never, ever be afraid to make some noise and get in good trouble, necessary trouble." So, thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just add really quickly. This is the first time that we're doing this, that we have everyone on Zoom. And it's really amazing to see everyone, that we're doing something on Saturday. So, thank you to our city staff and all of our residents for participating today, that we have full ASL interpreters on the line. Thank you so much, as well as Spanish. So, you know, we're trying to change how we do some of this work to include all voices. And I think this is really good progress. And I just want to say, you know, the city council will be listening today. We will not be speaking at you because we want to hear from you about your experiences in the past, your current experiences, and policy recommendations that you'd like us, different changes that you'd like us to bring forward in the future. And then we won't deliberate today. Like Councilmember Garner said, we will listen and hear you. And that's the purpose of today. And the last thing I want to say is that this is the first of many conversations. It's hard to engage people who, you know, maybe have not been properly engaged by the city before and to build trust with our residents. So, I appreciate the council's commitment to this and knowing that this is a first step, a first conversation. And then whatever comes out of this, we'll know what other types of conversations we should have. And if the public has comments about that, if you want smaller groups, if you want in-person safer, you know, in-person safe groups, if we want to do this differently, please let us know that too so that we can take your feedback and comments to heart and really listen and then act with urgency based on your public comments. So, thank you.
Thank you both for your leadership in organizing this. It's really appreciated and for your work on this for the council. And echo the thanks to staff for their work in publicizing this and also being here today to do this, with most of that effort now falling on our city clerk for this meeting and Aaron Brown, who's our deputy city manager for IT. So, I'll let the city clerk explain how we're going to be taking comments and then start us off. And just to let folks know, what we'll plan is a 1:00 bio break. So, we have that sort of built into the process so people can plan around. Obviously, if people need to take a break during this, please do. Obviously, it's easy for folks to do that at home. But to make sure council and staff also can take a break every two hours. And if someone needs one earlier, we can always take one. Just let us know from councilor staff on that. So with that, Anthony McHill, city clerk. Why don't you get us started?
Hi, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen so I can give you some initial instructions. So, first, I want to show how to access your menu options. If you have a shortened view, if you click on the word "more", you'll be able to see the other options that are available. In addition, if you need the assistance of an ASL interpreter, you're suggested that you go ahead and click on the upper right corner of the ASL interpreter's video and select "pin". You'll only be able to select one video at a time to pin. So, the interpreter would indicate to you when it's time to switch to the next person. If you need to access the Spanish interpretation, you'll click on the button "interpretation", and then you can select "Spanish", and then that will provide you with the simulcast of the Spanish interpretation. And also, if you go to palm springs ca.gov/listeningsession, you'll be able to access both the English and Spanish broadcasts, which are being livestreamed on YouTube. When it's time to begin our public comments, if you could begin by raising your hand to indicate that you would like to speak, I'll have the participant list open. If you click on the dots to indicate to raise your hand, that will allow me to know that you would like to speak. Please understand, this is my first time doing Zoom meeting in this way. So, I assure you, everybody will have their opportunity to speak. But we'll try to do this in an orderly fashion. And then once all of the participants within Zoom have finished their public comments, I will go to those people who have registered to have me call them. And then if you are on a phone dialing into the Zoom meeting, you'll need to press *9 to raise your hand. And then the last thing is generally, everybody will have approximately three minutes to provide their comments. I'll simply indicate that three minutes has elapsed, but you can go ahead and finish your comments even if it goes beyond that time. And then I believe that's... Oh, and if you could please keep your microphones muted until it's time for you to speak, as we will get feedback if you're not on mute. So with that, I think we can get started. Let me end the share mode. Okay. And let me admit all the new people. Okay. So if you could go ahead and please indicate by raising your hand that you would like to speak, and I will just start from the top. I'm going to go ahead and start with Claire Jordan Grant. If you could go ahead and unmute your microphone. And you will be our first speaker. Yes, I can hear you.
Very good. Good morning, everyone. It's so nice to be here in this way, this unusual way. I'm speaking this morning regarding the statue of Frank Fogert. I know that we've had a lot of conversation in the valley about this statue for some time. And I would like to add a perspective that I don't think I've heard before. And that is that it's very easy to remove the actions of the past from the past and to apply today's standards to them and to think that, you know, well, it was okay in the past. It's not okay today. But in the case of Section 14, in the way the purging of the minority population of Palm Springs was handled, in the era in which it happened, it was highly controversial. It was debated endlessly. It was talked about for decades after it occurred. And I remember when I was in my conference, and I imagine that was ladies is a story for another day. But on that particular, the conversation turns to section... It's written, "cleared and yada, 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 yada." And I remember that one person, and I'm going to say it was Mary Martin, but I can't say that for sure. I think it was Mary Martin. I remember it being Mary Martin who said this.
Claire, Claire, I'm sorry to interrupt you. We're having a hard time hearing you. You might want to turn your video off so that your video or your audio feed comes in more clearly.
There we go. Okay. Hang on just a second. Now letting me... Second... Oh, here we go. Okay. So, she said that while she agreed that Section 14 needed to be cleaned up, that the way that SOB did it, and she did not use the initials, the way that SOB did it, and everyone was very clear that she was talking about Frank Fogert because his name had been brought up many times in this conversation. She said, "The way that SOB did it was reminiscent of something we would have found in the deep spout." And that ended the conversation. There was no more debate about it after that because there was no one who disagreed with that. And it stuck with me for many years after that because I always thought it was so strange that a progressive little town like ours would have this dark history that included such a deeply racist act that could be compared to something that would have happened in Alabama or Georgia. And I have to say that when I moved back here in the early 2000s and I drove by City Hall and I saw the statue of Frank Fogert, the very first thing that came to my mind was, oh, wow. The old SOB fooled them. He won. And so I just want to suggest that perhaps old racists shouldn't get the last word. And even in the context of his own time, that act was condemned by people with a conscience. Thank you.
Thank you. And for those who have joined the meeting, if you would like to speak, please raise your hand. Again, if you go to the participant list and there's three little buttons, go ahead and click on that and then raise your hand. If you're on the phone, you'll need to hit *9, and that will put you with the raised hand mode. And so I'm going to go ahead and go to the next person, which is Michael Wright.
Hi. Thank you so much for having this meeting, and I appreciate the time. So, I wanted to preface this by saying that I have incredible respect for law enforcement. I think that they have an incredibly difficult job to do, so much so that I'd like to point out that public safety is actually a multifaceted and very complex issue. So, there are three completely distinct functions that these police are responsible for, which includes public safety, like what you would see from, you know, if you get a speeding ticket to prevent people from speeding on the roads, from preventing drunk driving. There's mental health components to this, and there's violence response. These are completely different functions. And we're expecting these people who have weeks' worth of training to fill all of these functions. And simply put, it is just not enough. We are asking too much of these law enforcement officials. We need to look at this holistically and think about how we can not defund the police. People misinterpret what that means. But what it really means is actually divest some of these resources into other really critical public safety measures. And we need to think about this as a big picture. I also just want to share a quick anecdote about an experience that we had. Someone mentioned just recently that no one was... that Palm Springs has a little bit of a racist undertone. About four weeks ago, four people who disagree with us politically were upset about us speaking out on behalf of Black Lives Matter. They showed up at our door, and they told us to call off a hit that we supposedly had put out on one of them. And they said that we sent four black men over to one of their homes to intimidate them. They said they caught this on video, and they said that they filed the police report. We were incredibly shaken. This had incredible racist undertones. We called the police the next day, and they said that there was no police report. This was completely made up. We then asked if they would please investigate this, and we have video footage to prove that they were there. The police said they do not respond to things that are not active crises. That did not make us feel safe. We need public safety, people to, you know, investigate when something like this occurs.
Can you hear me?
I am, yes.
Wes, you can go ahead and begin.
All right. Hey, guys. I'm Wes Brinkins, and everyone knows I'm part of the city of Palm Springs. And I really would like to thank the host for having this important listening session. I actually posted on my Facebook. I'm glad you're listening, but I hope you actually hear what we're saying. I have been a longtime resident, but I'm not, how can I say? What is it? A local, been born a racer. However, being here for so long, I have noticed and I do know that there has been an issue of racism. And to not say that there isn't would be a lie. We're just like any other city. But for some reason, the city won't acknowledge or accept that it has happened in the past and it happens now. I'm accepted here because I'm a black gay man, and I'm not a threat. But I do know that straight black men and straight black women do not feel comfortable here. They do not feel acceptable here. They don't feel welcome here. They always tell me when they visit, "Oh, it's a nice place, but there's not enough," or "I don't feel welcome." And you can see the difference as well as how they're treated versus the way I'm treated. As far as Bogart statue and as far as some other things, me as a black man, I have to see what my priorities are as far as this city. And for me, a statue is not as important as economic equality or basically for me, for this city to really firsthand apologize for the actions of that man. The statue, keep it up, but also put a plaque right beside of exactly what he did, exactly what the California State Attorney General said at the time, that it was a Holocaust at that time. But also honor an African-American man that helped build not only this city, but the Cotel Valley, is Lawrence Croazly, by giving him his full name on the street. This is the only person in this city that does not have his full name. It has been debated for years. And for some reason, the city will not acknowledge and will not put that man's full name on a street sign. That, to me, would be a bigger step than taking a statue down. Then, at the same time, let's look at the disparities that happen within this community. The African-American community and people of color community, they basically only have a couple of options here. It is a two-class society, the serve and those who are being served, the servers and those who have been served. They either have hospitality or either have to go somewhere in nursing school. There is no other jobs here inside of hospitality. I believe that if you have more access to more types of jobs, this is a desert that has really nice weather. There should be more access to more jobs. There should be more types of corporations here. There should be more access to a better education. There shouldn't have been the citizens of Desert Highlands, Unity Gateway community to ask council to get a bus line for their kids to get to school. There shouldn't have to be a multimillion-dollar project right across from that neighborhood. And we should all have access to that. But they built a fence, and you have to go all the way, at least three quarters of a mile, just to access that property that all residents of the city should have access to. There's not equal housing in this city for all residents here. When I was on the commission, it was reported that 87% of our kids qualify for a free or reduced lunch. That right there is an issue. That means that something is going on here. And I believe that the city needs to look at and accept that there is an issue with racism. There is an issue with sexism here. We're just like any other city. But until we acknowledge that and then until we accept the pain that has caused here and listen to the people and move forward, we can't move forward. And this city really is a beautiful city, and I love this city. And I wouldn't be here if I didn't. However, I do have to say, if you're not a gay white man, after about three days, you don't feel welcome here. And that's all I have to say.
The next speaker will be Lee Morkus.
Thank you. Good morning, council. Thank you for hosting this call. I see many people here that I've known for decades. I've come to love and respect and appreciate all of you. We're all custodians of our community. I'm from the mindset that we're one race human, one people American, one people Coachella Valley citizens, one people Palm Springs residents. I hate the dialogue where I hear us versus them. We've all been reflecting during this period of time. At least, I hope we have all been. I can certainly say I have been in a number of different levels in a number of different ways. I'd like to give acknowledgement to Chief Reyes and his police force. Police force, to me, is a positive term because they have been a positive force in this community and served us well for decades. It's an honor to have you in here. You are true ambassadors for the best of the city of Palm Springs. I've come to know many of the people on the staff personally over the years. You've saved my butt many times. And you deserve a lot of credit for the good work you do. And I thank you for it. Folks, the past, it's there. Can't change the past. Frankly, government, as much as I respect all of you that serve this community, you can't legislate change. If you could, there'd be no crime. There'd be no discrimination. There'd be no hate. And we would all live in a utopian society where everybody is happy. That's not the reality of people. What we can do is open the conversation so people start doing their own examination in their own hearts, their own minds, and their own souls. And that's the one thing I would like to encourage us all from my perspective to take away from this conversation today. We're in it together. And I don't want to hear conversation from anybody. It's foreign to me to talk about division when the answer lies in love and unity. Okay? And crime is going up. This isn't the time to get tough on police and soft on crime. My buildings have been vandalized more than once. These homeless people, as much as I feel for their plight and I salute Supervisor Perez for what he's trying to do to give people housing and a system and a way to get through it and out of it. I think it's part of the solution. But going soft on crime, this isn't the time for that. Crime is going up. It always does when there's economic trouble. And a crime against any of us, whether it's racial, property, gender, preference, religious, whatever it is, it's a crime against every one of us. And we all deserve to be safe. it is, it's a crime against every one of us. And we all deserve to be safe. And I've heard some people say, well, a crime against your building is no big thing. It's insured, it's this, it's that. It's not the same. Kaiser Grill employs 100 people that aren't working right now. It's a crime against my staff. It's a crime against the people we serve. It's a crime against our community. It's a crime against our tourists. It's a crime against everybody on this call. Granted, some crimes may be more severe than others, but crime is crime and crime knows no race creed, color preference, gender, et cetera. We need to be tough on crime, stand against it, look at the causes, do what we can to eliminate those as well. But honestly, we like to think we can fix everything. And we should try. But there's work to do here. And it starts with safe streets. Give me more time, I'll burn up this entire two-hour period, but I'll yield now. I've said from my heart, my mind. Jeff, thank you for your smile, your warmth. I appreciate you very much. I appreciate you, council. I appreciate being a part of this city. It's been a long time. But we all have work to do together. I don't want conversations to focus on difference and division. They're unhealthy. They're unproductive. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And just a reminder for everybody, if you would like to speak, please indicate by raising your hand. If you go to the participant list, you can go ahead and raise your hand or hit star nine if you're on the phone. The next speaker will be Zach Solomon.
Thank you, city council. Hello, everyone. Good morning. Thanks for doing this. And it's really great to see so many people from the community on this morning. It's probably more nervous, nerve-wracking to look at all of you than to have a city council call. But nonetheless, it's good to be here and talk to you all today. And I guess I want to just say a few things. You know, first off, I think it's really important that we, right now, one of the things I'm feeling in this conversation is that I want to make sure that we are focusing on policing and that this conversation doesn't get out of hand with other issues that might get in the way of policing. City council did a lot of work to make this event happen with a really specific agenda about racism and policing and the relation to policing out here in the valley. And there are a lot of like other topics that we could go into and will and can with city council, but this is a really specific place and I just don't want this to get kind of out of hand as far as like topics go. And I think having a single lens of purpose of this conversation is important because we have people who, you know, obviously I'm white and a male. I have not had any firsthand brutality experiences with police here. I do have one story, which is not about racial injustice personally that I have experienced, but it is about mental health and the nature of how police really might not be well-equipped to handle issues of mental health problems and how this is an opportunity of maybe looking to fund social work more in Palm Springs. So, a few years ago, I was going through some issues with depression and undiagnosed bipolar disorder and had a police come to visit me who had been kicked off that I was possibly a harm to myself. So, it's a pretty personal story. So, and the police officer, and I was fortunate that I had had some experience in the field of these kinds of issues. And but the police officer did not really have the tools to be able to handle that situation. And I felt the, I felt the presence that there was an obligation, a legal obligation of what he had to do in order to not get in trouble. Right? So, he was talking to me about Christianity and like things that were totally not, it was just completely patronizing. Now, I think he's a well-intentioned police officer doing his job, but I also think he is not trained in mental health. He's not trained in many aspects. And I, like, please don't send me to a facility against my will. He absolutely sent me to a facility against my will. Cost me thousands of dollars that I was like not ready to spend at that time. You know, like, so this is like a situation that I'm sure this police officer had good intentions. And he was not cruel or mean, but he was not particularly well-trained. And I know people who are well-trained in social work, in these types of situations. And if our city wanted to try to be creative to find different ways of handling these situations, there isn't going to be a mandate from the country of how to change our relationship to policing. This is something that each city and each state is going to have to take the lead on of how to be creative about. So, if this country is looking to reevaluate what our relationship to policing is, it's going to be this city in particular that has to find its own way of how to do that here. You know, so a conversation about defunding the police or, you know, things like what Seattle and Minnesota and Minneapolis have gone through, we're fortunate enough that we have a city council with our mayor on it. So, if our city council agrees on something, that means our mayor agrees on something. They don't have to make a pledge. They can make it happen. And, but simultaneously, our city is also our city. So, we have the people here who are ready for the conversation, who are ready for something, but they might not be demanding the same things that, as a whole, they might not be ready to demand the same things that something like Seattle is. And, you know, I'm very, I want really progressive and bold changes to the relationship to policing across America. I want the city that I live in, Palm Springs, that I was born in and been here for most of my life to be a part of that change. I want to see creative leadership from city council. I want to see collective, collective, yeah, disappointment and being collective upset and disappointment and rage, you know, with kindness and openness that I'm seeing across the country here in Palm Springs. And frankly, it feels stifled. You know, we talked about, there's a history of segregation in Palm Springs High School. My sister went to Palm Springs High School at an awful time of segregation at Palm Springs High School. There's a history of gentrification and placement of different communities in different places of this city. Thank you, Anthony. I'll try to wrap it up soon. You know, this affects young people and students as well. And I just, I hope that y'all take a really hard look at, and there's a lot of numbers that I'm sure you've been inundated with from email. And, you know, so I really wanted to go more to a personal level of, you know, that's a situation where we could actually look to fund social workers and also, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. And the next speaker will be Carol Listenberger.
Hi. I was very struck by what Zach just said because I am a retiree who moved here after becoming retired. So, I haven't been here too long, about five years. And I haven't had any personal interaction with the police, thank goodness. I haven't had any reason to. No victim of crime or anything. But what I have noticed is, as an observer, I like to go out and be about in the neighborhood. Of course, I don't do it now because of COVID. But before that, I spent a lot of time at the library. I spent a lot of time at parks. I like to go downtown. I love to sit in coffee shops. So, I have a lot of time to observe people. And what I've noticed that's different about Palm Springs that I wasn't used to from where I came from, was that we do have a large homeless population and that the police seem to be the ones that have to take care of any kind of troubles that arise because of that. I've been in places where I've seen stealing going on and I said something to one of the employees and they said, yeah, it's just one of those things. It happens and we know it and it has to, we just let it go. And I thought, well, that's a shame because, you know, that's something that you shouldn't have to put up with as a business expense. And then I've seen instances of disruptions where people who were in obvious distress had an issue and then the police came, but they, you know, they were trying to act as a social worker. And you could see that the police were uncomfortable. They were very stiff and formal-looking and they didn't quite have that caring attitude that you would expect from someone who's trying to calm down a person who is in a mental distress. And so, I felt bad for the person who was needing help. I felt bad for the people trying to give help. And I've noticed this so many times in just being out in the community. For instance, at Sunrise Park, you know, there was a huge problem and then the police had to practically move in to solve it. And it seems like it's such a waste of policing expertise when there should be some other kind of force or core or whatever you want to call it that can handle these situations better than they. Because the police are trained to do law enforcement and this really isn't a law enforcement problem. So, I just wanted to say that as an observer. I can't speak to whether I've noticed any racial overtones in this because I've seen it happen with black people and white people. And like I said, I don't have personal experience. But as an observer, I felt bad about that situation. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker will be, well, before I get to that, just a reminder, if you would like to speak, please raise your hand. And if you're on the phone, just hit star nine and that will indicate to me that you would like to speak. The next person will be Craig Ewing.
Hello. My name's Craig Ewing. Some of you know me as the former planning director for the city of Palm Springs. I also serve on the board of the Desert Water Agency for 13 years. But I want to tell a different part of myself, and that is, I'm a native Californian suburban white kid who benefited immensely from the system in place over the last 60-plus years here in California, the United States. And it didn't occur to me over the years that this wasn't everyone's birthright to be able to walk out on the street as a kid and go wandering with my brother and a sack lunch and mom's instructions were to just be home by four o'clock. And I now have learned how that is not an experience shared by many, many people. And that revelation took a long time to happen. But it is, for me, something of the spiritual level. And so, as an Episcopalian, I went looking and found the Absalom Jones Center for Racial Healing, which is located in the diocese of Atlanta, Georgia, and participated in a number of YouTube Zoom conversations with priests who are police and black attorneys.
...
My brother and a sack lunch and mom's instructions were to just be home by four o'clock.
I'm sorry, Craig. Whoever, whoever is...
That is not an experience shared by many, many people.
Let me check to see whose microphone's unmuted.
And that revelation took a long time to happen.
There you go.
Thank you. So, the Absalom Jones Center for Racial Healing provided a tremendous alternative view of the world for me. And it really changed my view of local government. And so, I provide that background to the comments that I provided the council. I'm going to read it to you. It's not that long. And I believe that we need to develop a new city model for safety services, including police, mental health services, homeless services, NGOs, and neighborhoods. There should be no discussion of defunding the police, but of constructing a new framework of how the community identifies those in distress and provides appropriate services. This framework will need information from police, county mental health, and homeless services agencies, for and not-for-profit groups, as well as neighborhood leaders, on how we connect with each other. If we can identify through families, friends, neighbors, and local groups, those at risk of falling into aggressive or violent behavior before it happens and address the risk conditions, we can move away from an after-the-fact response. Presently, the police are the sole responders addressing the bad behavior and not the underlying conditions. A new model of safety services prioritizes the treatment of life needs over punishment of consequent behavior. And I'd like to help. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker will be David Weiner.
Hi, everyone. First, I want to thank the city council for putting this together. I think it's amazing that we are having this discussion today. In any event, I want to talk about a couple of things. But first, like Craig and Carol and Zach all touched on, I think we get caught up in this term, defunding the police.
...
Sorry, somebody's unmuted and I'm getting feedback. I think we all are getting it. Okay. In any event, I think we're getting caught up in this term, defund the police, when what we're really talking about is maybe prioritizing what police activity should be. We all are speaking to the fact that police right now are serving as mental health professionals and providing services that really don't involve law enforcement.
Like Craig and Carol and Zach.
I'm so sorry. Can everyone hear me okay? Because I'm getting like discussion that I said 20 minutes, 20 seconds ago. In any event, okay, that was the main point I wanted to make. I just, I think we're talking about looking at what services the police are doing and should be doing and should they be done by other agencies or other professionals. So, maybe if we take those responsibilities out of the police department, we don't need close to 100 sworn officers. The other thing I want to touch on a little bit is the statue because I was the guy that, for whatever reason, started that petition. Because I'll be very honest, I just didn't think we should, given the history of Section 14 and how our past mayor was involved in some of those evictions, including signing eviction notices as a conservator for tribal members that owned the land, it didn't seem right that we should be celebrating him in front of city hall if we want city hall to feel like a welcoming place for all of our residents. So, I've kind of been attacked from all angles, the left and the right on this. But really, my point is, maybe city hall isn't the best place for that statue to be. Maybe it should be in a museum with a discussion of what happened, a discussion of the history. And it's not about erasing the history. It's just about putting the history in the place where it belongs. And I don't think that's in front of Palm Springs City Hall. I have gotten some, a lot of support as well. And I'm just trying to do this as a member of the community. This is my home. I lived here for 16 years. And thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. And the next speaker will be Janil Hunt.
Good morning. As I understand, this Zoom meeting is to focus on not just policing, but race relations, discrimination, and that includes related issues. So, with that being said, the first thing that I want to talk about is the statue of Frank Bogert. Section 14, my granny came to this, to the reservation in 1946. On that reservation, they were not allowed or afforded the same opportunities as other people. My granny would talk about how the houses were bulldozed. They had to grab what they could. I have a cousin to this day who wasn't able to retrieve all of her dolls, but she still collects dolls to this day. And I didn't understand the importance of those, that doll collection to her until I actually spoke to her. So, when talking about the statue, we have to remember, there are direct quotes from our former mayor and city council people. One came from the January 19th, 1965 Desert Sun, where he talks about where the area was just trash. And I'm sorry, I have a lot of emotion because this affects my family directly. And then it wasn't until the city attorney decided that Jeremy B. Bunker at the time decided that maybe we should do something before the NCAA gets approved. Then we had the 1968 Section 14 California Attorney General's report. And within that report, it talks about the living condition, how the eviction notices went down, and that our former mayor, Frank Bogert, the statue that is out there in front of city hall, how he signed, he agreed, and he said, yes, clear the area because it was not to benefit the black people that lived on that area. Did they care about how those families were displaced? No, they did not. Not at all. And I've heard a lot about how crime doesn't have a color, but it does. People have been affected. People have been affected and it is difficult. It is difficult for me being an African, being a black woman, and I'm not even going to say African-American woman. I'm going to say black woman. Because that's what you see, that's how I see and that's how I feel. And that includes a lot. Um, do you really know what it's like to be intentionally followed because you are on parole? And then stopped in front of your grandmother's house, your vehicle searched? No, I witnessed it firsthand. Do you know what it's like being pulled over with your brother in the vehicle, knowing that as a high schooler, the only way you could get out of the house was to, is if your brother took you out to a party with him? And being surrounded by four police officers with their lights shining bright on you, telling you to stay in your car with weapons drawn? I know what that's like because it happened to me. Or watching your brother pick up beer bottles from his grandmother's name, from his grandmother's home because there's a party across the street and the beer bottles are in her yard. And the police officer taking my brother, when he was in high school, down to the police department, arresting him, kept him there for four hours. And it wasn't until a good friend of ours, Dr. Picky Ode, he said, you know what? Give him that breathalyzer test that his mother's been asking for. And they found that he didn't have a drop of alcohol in his system. So if you want to talk about defunding police, well, the police obviously aren't going to go anywhere. So let's restructure and let's get them some training that's needed. And then when they come to those neighborhood groups, let it be a genuine, a genuine conversation that they want to have. Don't send somebody out there because it's, that's what they have to do. It's not worth it. And I wanted to just touch on a couple of different things, but in that, I'm going to go back to section fourteen, sorry, because I'm running out of time and I wanted to make sure I hit different things. Um, the city at the time didn't feel like they owed anybody, anybody, any of those, any of those natives that lived on the reservation at the time an apology. And it was quoted that it, I feel like we did the people a favor. You did them a favor. And that was a direct quote from Frank Bogart. So when I drive past that statue, I don't, I can't even look at it. Because I had already knew what that statue meant. Because my granny, Claudia Crawford, she instilled that in me, said, hey, you know what? It hasn't been easy. It hasn't been easy even for me as a black woman. I have a black son. I have a black daughter. Raised a black son is not easy. As he experienced a different um, discrimination and stuff like that, it's hard to sit down with your son and keep and be strong for your son as he's seen what's going on in society. And knowing that in a year, I have to send my child out there. And it's, and I can't be there protecting him because he has to continue on down that next, to the next chapter. Not something I'm looking forward to, especially with the things that are going on in today's society. And if we can't even fix what's happening in our own backyard and we can't correct the wrongs that have been wronged, this is a waste of time, man. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. And the next speaker will be Mari Cruz.
Hi, um, good morning. Just fairly good morning. First, there's a lot of things to say about this. Uh, but first, thank you to city council for putting this together. Um, it's been long overdue. Um, another thank you to uh, Councilwoman Christie and Grace for voting against the body cameras. They are not a good investment of our city dollars right now, especially with summer, with our problem with homelessness, all of the other issues that are going on. So thank you for voting no against those body cameras. Uh, just as a point of clarification, um, Palm Springs is racist. Um, I have been told to go back to my country multiple times here and I'm born and raised here. I've never known any other place than here um, as home. Educational opportunities are not equal here. I have heard racism from white teachers in Palm Springs Unified School District because they assumed I didn't understand English. I have been a substitute teacher here in the Palm Springs Unified School District and I have witnessed the treatment of these students firsthand. I went to the high school here and I was the only Latina in my AP classes. And I don't think that's an accident. I don't think I'm smarter than my other friends. Um, so those are just some points of clarification. And I'd like to add that I'm a political scientist. And so I study race and social divisions and political power for a living. Um, and I'd just like to point out that focusing on unity, focusing on one group as a whole, doesn't allow us to see who is falling through the cracks. Um, it doesn't allow us to see where our resources need to be placed. So by focusing on one race, one humanity, we leave people behind and equities are allowed to go un, uh, un, un, unrectified. Um, so we need to have a frank conversation about where our income inequality is. And if you take a look at a social explorer, it's just a data map. It's all concentrated along the edges. The center of town is protected downtown. Um, as a longtime resident, you know, you'll never see a homeless person there until everything else is closed. Um, so let's really, um, I encourage my white neighbors to really consider what, what world we're living in. Why, why do you think that it's not worth it to not go after the shoplifter? There are bigger problems here. Why did they need to shoplift? Um, that's the bigger question that you should be asking yourself. Um, and stop putting a preference on, on tourists and people who are just here temporarily. Um, so thank you for those council members who have started to do that. And I, I really appreciate this phone call. Um, but I'll, I'll leave it there. Thank you. Oh, and divest means divest, defund means defund. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker will be Lex Ortega.
Thanks, Anthony. Hi, y'all. Thank you so much. Um, first I want to do a land acknowledgement as a person who was born and raised in Palm Springs. Um, it was many years before I uh, learned the history of the land um, and the people who um, took care of the land, the ancestral home of the Cuyah people. Um, and I think that that's a shame, right? And I think that the reason why we don't learn the history of the land is because this is America. And um, while we might not want to believe it and while it might be hard to hear, um, white supremacy is what this country was built on. Plain and simple. Um, so I want to acknowledge the land. I want to acknowledge the original folks who have taken care of this land for centuries, um, longer than America has been around. I also just want to continue to uplift the things that um, the black folks have shared. Um, I want to, you know, the types of racism that I have experienced might be like classified as microaggressions. Like the types of things that you heard Mari Cruz say, right? Which is like, you know, folks assuming that you don't speak English because um, maybe the way you look. Um, that's happened to me a couple of times. Um, this is also like a continuation of conversations that came up during the districting process. A process that we took together with many of US city council members uh, a couple of years back. Right? That's why it was important for us to create a majority minority district. Because the reality is because of gentrification, because of the economy, um, brown people and black people have been pushed out. Uh, all the folks that I know, who I grew up with in the Golden Sands neighborhood and the Sunrise um, Village Trailer Parks by Coyote Run, nearly all of them. Um, even some folks in Warm Sands before it became the Warm Sands that we know today. They all live in Cathedral City now. And that is for a reason. Uh, we're building multimillion dollar housing projects where houses start at six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars. Who can afford that? Typically, it's usually mostly white people. And so all these issues are related. Um, I also agree that body cams aren't necessarily like the, the wisest investment. And simultaneously, that's something that the black community here locally has been asking for. So how do we hold um, what needs to happen now, what folks have been asking for now, but also looking towards the future? And lastly, you know, as a, as a queer person, um, I've been really proud of my city for stepping up with regards to national issues, things like marriage equality, um, and wanting to be a model, right? I've heard that rhetoric come from the dice, come from media interviews from city council members. Um, and I think that that's something that we can continue to do, be a model when it comes to race, when it comes to policing. I, I think if, if that's something that we want to live up to as a city, to be a model for other cities, uh, this is a perfect case to do it. We, we have our own police department. We aren't beholden to a county sheriff. Um, and so there's a ripe opportunity here for us to make the changes. Um, that quite frankly will be for the rest of my life. I will live here. Um, this is where my family is. So um, I really hope that action happens. I'm glad uh, we've had the action we've had so far. And I'm looking forward to seeing what comes um, in the future. And I also, you know, thank you city council for doing this. But this is also not just a city government problem. This is a problem within all of our businesses, all of our nonprofits, all of our service agencies. So um, you know, this is an opportunity for all of us to look inward to, find our spheres of influence um, and also be a part of the change. Thank you.
Thank you. And uh, just a reminder, if you would like to speak, uh, please uh, just click on participants and then the uh, little buttons, the little dots, um, and raise your hand and that will let me know that you would like to speak. Uh, the next person is Chris Garcia.
Good morning, everybody. Um, so I just want to talk about with this whole situation, with the police brutality and police violence that has been happening. Because I know I felt like really, like pretty upset when I heard about like police violence in Minneapolis when it comes with like black people being treated like this. But the only issue is that police needs more knowledge about the laws. Because, because what I noticed is that they, they need to know all about the laws. And of course, police have to follow their own laws, including like the amendments. For example, the first amendment is that they need to be taken seriously and enforced, which is all about like free speech and everything like that. And I also want like, for example, the cops like, something that they need to take action to stop this violence when it comes with like people for committing such a minor crime. Since I don't know why cops are doing this to just go violence against these people for just only committing this small type of infraction. Because we, like this needs to be taken seriously, but I know that body cams is a great thing for the, to, or it's a great change. But it needs more of that to take a lot more action with these police officers and everything like that. But the issue is, is when it comes with the academies and everything like that, it's too short, by the way, because I heard about that police academies around two months or something. But it needs to be a lot longer because I heard that other countries with police academy, they have around like two years to become a police officer. But in my opinion, I wish they would have brought like a police academy to bring more knowledge on their laws and everything like that so that they can follow and take things seriously when it comes with the infractions and whatever type of crime they committed, such as like small or big crimes. But why are you, but why do cops are just bringing like weapons and everything like that for just committing a small crime? Because I, it doesn't make any sense to me. Because this is why people get really nervous and people get afraid of cops because of this. Because I know, I, I felt really sad when I heard about like police violence and everything for such a small crime because they don't do anything really bad. Because I respect blacks, I respect people of color. You know, everybody's welcome here. And I know Palm Springs is a great city and we're not immune with racism and everything like that, including the type of, you know, for the Karen that I heard about. You know, like asking for like show me your papers and everything like that, which it is not a right thing to say to the people and everything like that. But for my big thoughts is that police academy should make this requirement for four years to serve it. Like for four years is pretty much enough so that police will know everything about the laws and everything like that, including the constitution and the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four and, and take things seriously. And of course, like banning discrimination needs to be enforced or whether institutional or individual, they have to take things seriously on banning discrimination. And we want everybody to be welcome and everybody to be treated equally. And those are all my thoughts.
Thank you. And the next speaker will be Edwin Ramorian.
Good midday, everybody. Thank you, um, Mayor Coors, Mayor Protim, the Hostage, council members Garner, Middleton and Woods. Um, thank you, Anthony. Give it up for Anthony Mahia, he always like keeps us together. Thank you so much. Um, I feel a lot of emotion right now and I think, you know, a lot of us are muted right now because you won't hear the emotion that's actually, you know, you could feel it, right? It's just, it's palpable. Um, I, I have to, as full disclosure, um, I do serve on the Human Rights Commission and on the Expanse of Twenty Twenty Committee. And I was so proud to be part of the districting last year. Um, to be part, to be born and raised in District One um, and to have Grace Elena Garner elected to be our council member is a huge deal. Um, I am also a member and co-founder of, uh, an organizer for by Nihon Desert, which is focused on Filipino community engagement and, and civic duties. And I want to start off straight up, you know, I was born and raised in Veterans Tract. You know, we know what our neighbor's name is. There are a lot of things and I have a lot of complaints. And I, you know, this is where we're going to bring up complaints because you know, it'd be great to see where um, this listening and this engagement, you know, where it goes, where it continues to uplift. I, I'm so grateful that I've been uplifted um, by our, you know, our city council, by our, you know, our community, like Alexis Ortega and Dieter Crawford. You know, we, we're uplifted by so many of our, our, our leaders, like Jarvis Crawford as well. And like, there are so many of us. Um, but I want to get to a lot of things and, and I think this is just the beginning. I think we're just at the beginning of what's going to happen, you know, in terms of how we can consolidate all the discussion and like feelings and emotions about it. But I do want to just go and like, um, talk about two, you know, I'm, I'm a curator by training and I've come into local politics now, um, neighborhood politics. And I'm, and I'm looking at all the structural things that are happening um, and changes. Is there a problem? What's that? I'm getting text messages about it. Anyway, I'm sorry this is live, right? But I want to get to two um, writers in particular. I've been writing about artists and I, I was looking at Paulo Freire, for instance, who wrote Pedigree of the Press. And he said in his book, Cultural Teachers, uh, as uh, cultural workers, teachers as cultural workers. He said, he wrote, "The so-called strength of the blood," to use a popular expression, "exists, but it is not a determining factor. Just as the presence of the cultural factor alone does not explain everything. In truth, freedom, like a creative deed of human beings, like an adventure, like an experience of risk and creation, has a lot to do with the relationship between what we inherit and what we acquire." Um, and then just to end off, I want to also bring in Edward Said because you know, he's been a huge influence on us in terms of looking at Orientalism and, and the plight of our Palestinian siblings. And what we do here, you know, I'm really, we, we want, I want to see that we do work with our siblings of African-American descent and of Native descent. We need to look at our Asian and Pacific Islander siblings and our Latinx siblings when we do this work together. That's the coalition that we're working on. This is what Edward Said wrote. I'm going to end off with this part just to get it going. There's, there's so much more to talk about. Uh, Edward Said wrote, "Representations are a form of human economy in a way and necessary to life, to life in society and in a sense, between societies. So I don't think there is any way of getting away from them. They are as basic as language. What we must eliminate are systems of representation." What we must eliminate are systems of representation that carry with them the kind of authority, which to my mind, has been repressive, because it doesn't permit or make room for interventions on the part of those represented." So I end off right there, and I can't wait to discuss more with all my siblings out there in Palm Springs and beyond. Thanks.
Thank you, and the next speaker will be Kathy Wurman.
Am I unmuted? Yeah. Uh, I actually want to talk about the police. Um, and I want to talk about a couple of things that I've seen and been concerned about. Um, I like, um, what Ortega worked on districts two years ago, and in doing that, I had occasion to go to multiple communities and multiple community meetings. Uh, I went several times to the Desert Highlands community, where what I saw was rude tension and rude behavior on the part of the police toward the residents of that community, when they raised issues of being stopped on the street, and issues about being notified if their children were in, um, trouble at school, as opposed to just having police intervention. And I paired that with my own community, which is in Ascena, also in District One, but it's wealthier and whiter, much whiter, uh, and the police who come to our community meetings are, um, respectful, polite, pleasant, and they don't have tension. That, that behavior is a privilege I don't want to have. I don't want there to be two types of treatments for different people, really based on race. Um, in the district process that we worked on, it was an attempt to bring the Latino, the Black, the Filipino, the Asian communities into our city, and I think we've done that, we started to do that. These discussions, I think, are really a step because we did do that. Um, I'm hoping that some of the things that come out of these discussions are a thorough review of police teachers. I have a lot of concern about people being stopped because they're on parole, or just stopped because they're black teenagers. I think we have to look at where the police do that, what they're doing, and whether those things fit into our values. Uh, that, that's my first concern as to what comes out of that, so that the, the review that we have is thorough, and our police are trained in a way that they don't escalate situations, which is what I saw in Desert Highlands, but they de-escalate situations. And where there are situations that do not require someone coming in with lethal, the possibility of lethal force, which is what police are trained to use, that we look at, are there areas where that should not be a factor in working with people who are in crisis? Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. I do want to let people know that apparently this meeting's maxed at a hundred people. And so if you've already given your comments, uh, if you could respectfully, please, um, leave the meeting and go to the YouTube channel, or, or to, um, Channel Seventeen, and you can watch the meeting live from there. That will allow people, more people to join our meeting who are still waiting to give their comments. Uh, so the next speaker will be Frank Ferris. Uh, again, the next speaker is Frank, Frank Ferris. Okay, uh, we'll come back to you. Uh, let's go to Rochelle. Rochelle, you, you can go ahead and begin speaking.
Great, thank you, sorry about that, I was trying to unmute. My name is Rachel Campbell, and I'm a native Palm Springs, born and raised, um, for thirty-nine years. I'm also a City of Palm Springs employee, I've worked for the city for twenty-three years. Um, I really want to just try to make a comment about our, our police department. Our city police department is like no other. Um, three years ago, we all voted to, uh, we wanted to do a law enforcement, which is the city, uh, measured deep. And with us being a resort, uh, city, it's needed. Um, when you woke up this morning and you read the news, three of our officers were assaulted by, by someone that was on drugs, and that's not okay. Um, if you look at it, the police, the police officers, they're the ones that are really taking the abuse right now. Um, they're still serving the city, they're still working hard to protect. Um, twenty years ago, everyone said, okay, we need more community-based policing, that's what our city went to, community-based policing, neighborhood contact. Um, now, there may need to be a change, but it's not of, well, have mental health come in and work with it. Um, as a resident of Palm Springs, just driving down the town with my, my twelve-year-old niece, I mean, you see homeless people doing drugs right there on the street corner, and then having me trying to explain to them of what's going on. Homelessness is an issue, the police department's trying to do whatever they can to help with it. Um, it seems like other agencies who agree to help with homelessness, they're not stepping up to help. I, that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you, and the next speaker will be, uh, Frank, are you back? Frank Ferris? I'm sorry, Frank, I see that you did unmute your mic, however, we're not able to hear you. So if you want to go ahead and test that, there you are.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, my name is Frank Perea, sir. I'm going to say some things that some people don't feel comfortable hearing these things, but I'm not a racist. I come from, I was raised poor. My parents raised twelve kids, twelve of us. Our doctor that brought us into the world, all twelve of us, was a black doctor. Our babysitter when we were kids was a black lady. You know, and we're missing the point, why we're having this conversation right now with you guys? They kind of seem that the police are doing everything wrong, the police done this wrong, the police are racist, the police are not racist. In Ferguson, I mean, in Minneapolis, George Floyd was trying to cash some twenty, fake twenty-dollar bills, they called the cops, the cops come, he didn't want to get up, he didn't want to get in the backseat of the car, they struggled, they threw him on the floor, they knee him, and now they protest that it's racist. The guy went to cash fake twenty-dollar bills in the Tyrone Martin Casey Florida when all this started. He went to get ice tea, at ten o'clock at night, he comes by, he sees the man up there watching in the shadow by the wall, instead of him walking back to the house, to his house, or, or running and call the cops, there's a man up there watching, he confronts this guy, and they get in an argument, he gets shot. Now there's another protest, it's racist. It's not racist. I don't do nothing wrong, I don't have nothing to worry about the cops, I don't think I would do nothing wrong. And if I'm stopped, if a cop stops me, the badge means something, the blue uniform means something, the car with blue lights means something. I stop, ask for my driver's license, says, uh, whatever they want to see, here it is, sir. And they let me go on my way. Nothing wrong. I don't run, what, all these protests are within right now, you know, in the millions, why come they don't say, hey, guys, let's not do drugs? Hey, guys, let's not do fake money. Hey, guys, if the cops stop you, stop. Give them what they want to know, we got a better chance in court than running away from the cops. The guy in Windies, in Atlanta, we see it right here clearly on TV, if that guy would have gotten the real gun from the cop instead of the taser, that cop would have been dead. And we wouldn't be having this conversation, just, well, another cop dead, that's what happened. But no, now the cops shot the black man. Now we got protests from all over the place. In Sacramento, some time ago, a guy was breaking windows in the cars in the middle of the night, the cop comes and they catch him, he runs to Brammo's house, hide behind the shed, where he has no place else to go, he pulls out his cellphone, the cops shot him, thinking it was a gun. So there's a big protest, they call it racist. It's not racist. If we don't do nothing wrong, we don't have nothing to worry about the cops. Well, we should, you know, I come from a town where, in the seventies, they would say, it's seven o'clock, you know where your kids are? It's ten o'clock, you know where your kids are? You know what your kids are doing? Educate this, let's educate people in this manner, maybe this, the crime will stop, you know? I mean, these protesters are up here, they're not, they don't even know George Floyd. They're protesting just because they see the opportunity to get into stores, loot the stores, steal as much as they can, take as much as they can, and if the cops come around and beat them, or, you know, not beat them, but if they don't stop, they have to, cops have to take forth, and stop this person, stop, I'm the cop, I got a badge, I'm authorized to put you in jail. If you don't want to go to jail, I'm going to do what I have to do. Another gentleman, the cops stopped him for, for a tell like they didn't work. He got out of the car, the cop, well, everything was going to be just, a routine stop, the guy runs, the guy shots, shoots him in the back, kills the guy. Again, what is this thing of running away? Stop, the cop, he just wants some information, give him the information, you got a better chance in court.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, the next speaker will be Angie Patrick.
Trying to get the video, so, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Let's see, let's see, if I can start the video. I was trying to start the video, but at least you can hear me, right?
Uh, we can see you as well.
Okay. Um, first of all, I'd just like to say, um, thank you guys for, um, having this meeting. Um, I didn't think I was going to participate, I'm not a get up on a Saturday morning type of person. Um, but, um, but for some reason, I had a very vivid dream, so then, that, uh, impelled me to, to do this. I'm a lifelong Palm Springs resident, I, I have been here my entire life. Um, I live in the same community, the Desert Highland Gateway Estates. Right now, I'm living in my parents' home, um, the only home I've ever known, so I, I don't know any other place. Um, there's a lot I can say, that we have a past, we have a present, and God knows only our future, but, um, I love this city. I think we have a wonderful city council, um, God bless you all, you're great people. Um, Chief Riz is, is awesome, and, uh, thank you, Chief, for doing a great job. But as, uh, a, someone who's been here their entire life, and Palm Springs is like the tale of two cities. Growing up here, the community I grew up in was at least eighty-five, ninety percent white. You could sprinkle in another ten percent, you could sprinkle in a couple, um, um, black populations, Hispanic and Pacific Islanders, Asian and so forth. So, growing up in, uh, a city that was predominantly white, and, um, having your parents come from a small town in Mississippi, they weren't on Section Fourteen, um, a lot of people in our community are, come from Section Fourteen and, uh, ended up residing here. So I heard the horror stories of it, um, even though I didn't have that experience, I still had some, you know, uncomfortable experiences with racism here in Palm Springs. And I think the most hurtful thing for me growing up was, you know, Palm Springs and Spring Break was the ultimate, I mean, it was all over the world, that was the place to be, Spring Break. And I used to go downtown with my friends, and it was a mixture, you know, you had, I had a lot of white friends, I had these friends, or whatever, and you'd be walking, or whatever, and you'd bump into other African-American, uh, students, and they would look lost and confused, and they'd ask me a question, uh, like, thinking I was lost and confused too, and I would tell them about, you know, where to go, what to do, and I would always get this reaction, always, wait a minute, you telling me there are black people that actually live in Palm Springs? I say, yeah, we've been living here since the nineteen fifties. And to be in a community where people don't think you actually, is impossible for you to actually reside, and, uh, was kind of, kind of hurtful. So I always got this feeling like we were left invisible, we weren't part of the marketing of Palm Springs, the African-American community. Um, but that didn't stop me from getting involved, um, I'm the former president of the Desert Highland Gateway Estates Community Action Association, I've served on ten boards throughout this city, um, mostly at the encouragement of former mayor Ron Oaten, who, at the time, was a, um, instructor of mines at College of the Desert, he encouraged me to, to get involved. Uh, Mr. Oaten had a very, um, I would say ambitious campaign, he started the Palm Springs African-American Chamber of Commerce. He was really, really, um, put his heart into it, it was short-lived, um, there, there was always a great need to build black businesses here. All my friends who are business, black business owners here in the Coachella Valley, born and raised in Palm Springs, or lived in this, um, community, they don't live here anymore in Palm Springs, everybody lives in Cathedral City, that's why they have their business, or they live in Desert House Springs, and, or Palm Desert somewhere else, they live in another desert city. So it's, it's, it's a shame that all we, we put into growing up and bringing that culture here, that when we get to an age to raise our own family and build our own home, we go to another desert city. Number one is too expensive for most of us to live here, and like I said, we still feel we're left out of the marketing, and doing my air quotations, of Palm Springs. And, uh, it's time for us to stop being invisible and let people know that we're here. I love this city, um, I've done work with the Palm Springs PD, I was, um, part of the City of Palm Springs Citizens Police Academy, I'm a graduate- I went graduate. I patrol with them. I went to a lot of meetings. They have a tough job. Being a police officer is something personally, I, I, I couldn't see myself doing. After one day of patrolling around with them, I, I got a whole new perspective. Um...
Ms. Patrick?
Yes, yes, sir.
It's been about five, five or six minutes.
Okay. But, thank you, um, God, God bless everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the next speaker will be Thomas Swoop. Again, the, the next speaker will be Thomas Swoop.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, there we go. Sorry about that. Uh, yes, um, listen, thank you, City Council, and thank you, Mayor, for doing this. I'm actually a Cathedral, Cathedral City resident. And I came in, I was just gonna listen. But, uh, real quick, I just want to make a couple of comments on a couple of things. Um, really quick, the statue, move it. It's in front of City Hall, and that, that kind of sends a message, if you will. Plain and simple. I know people want to hold on to it. Just move it away from in front of, put it anywhere else in Palm Springs. But in front of City Hall, that kind of sends a message to all your residents and people who visit here and know the history of that thing. And the one most important thing I wanted to comment on was about the body cameras. I didn't realize there was a debate on those, right? And I just want to say personally that as a black man who lives in this country, basically, with the environment we're in right now, if I'm ever pulled over by the police, I want every camera at every angle rolling and recording everything. I don't know why there would even be a debate about those. To me, that's the equalizer. And a lot of the things that are happening now would not be happening if it wasn't for the body cameras. So, I don't know why that's in question. I personally feel that they should be utilized, and they should not have a off button. They should be recording at all times to a cloud. That's it. We need to get to the data, someone can get to it. So, that's just my personal opinion. If you guys are debating that, please take that into consideration. I want the cameras. That's all I have. Thank you.
Uh, if, if I could just offer a little clarification. The City Council did approve of body cameras. Um, they approved it on a five to zero vote. Um, and, and the rollout is anticipated to be, uh, in three months or four months or less. Um, and it will start, um, as soon as the sirens, um, are activated. Um, but the next speaker is going to be Denise Eager.
Hi. My name is Denise Jantzen-Eager. And, um, I've been living here in Palm Springs since about 2013. My family moved from Wisconsin. Um, I've been a social justice activist pretty much since about the mid, the late seventies. So, one of the first things I did arriving in Palm Springs is I took the Community Police Academy class that's offered through the Police Department. And was very interested in everything and agree with the last callers that, yes, uh, officers do have a rough job. I was very much interested in finding out, why are they, the people who are the first responders to those who live homeless? That was, that was strange to me. I don't, I still don't quite understand that. I thought there'd be a better use of funding, uh, through social workers and other, um, uh, other agencies in helping people who live houseless. Um, I do see that the police do have a role in, uh, people who do, who live homeless. But, um, that's not what I'm here to talk about. So, perhaps, um, that can be also investigated. Uh, what I want to talk about was when the discussion of use of force came up, the speakers, the police officers, said it was basically a few bad apples. It was situational. It was based on the officers. And when I brought up in this room full of people about where does racism in policing, wh- what about that? Because, again, I am a social justice activist. They basically said, "Nah, we don't see it." I was struck by that. And I really agree with the previous callers who have said, "We need a thorough review of policing in Palm Springs, including this academy." Because we're hearing one thing in these academies, and yet when the situation, the revolution that's occurred this past, this summer, we're hearing the police chief come out and say something totally different. I, I'm really conflicted by this. Um, the other thing I wanted to do in this, with this review is things like, why is the COVID-nineteen violators hotline aligned with the Police Department? Um, I think there are a lot of things with our Police Department that they're doing well. I also think that there are a lot of question marks that we, as a community, need to start looking into and saying, "What's up with that? Why is this?" And, um, thanks for listening. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. And the next speaker will be Ragda.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. But if you could speak a little bit closer to your microphone, I think that would...
I am. Yeah, I was, I was having a long story. Hello, everyone. I wasn't planning to speak. I already sent my email, my thoughts, to the clerk this morning. But I love this forum, and I can tell there is a lot of intelligence and, um, participants, that's my own thoughts. I'm a believer of moving forward and finding a solution. Um, moving backwards doesn't solve anything. And for a longest time, I've been thinking of a solution because the words have a huge power. So, my thoughts, just want to let you know, I am an immigrant. I moved here thirty-seven years ago. I have three kids. Um, I've gone through everything. I had some free jobs. I moved to Palm Springs, like, uh, two years ago, from smaller town, like Palm Springs. And I just believe of the power of a word. For instance, why don't we take the labeling out of our vocabulary? Because the minute you state certain words, it already creates hostility. It creates division. It makes you feel intimidated. We are all one community. We're all Americans. We're all in Palm Springs. So, take the labeling out, and that will reduce racism. Because if somebody comes and talks in my face, which happened to me in the past, them today, I'm still asked, "Where are you from?" And I have the perfect solution answer for that. So, I honestly, I just want to share with you a recent experience I experimented. I did attend all the marches in Palm Springs on purpose, to educate myself. And I can tell you, um, I'm sixty-two. And I can tell you, there is a lot of historical misinformation has been shared with those young marchers. A lot of hostility that wording would create hostility. So, after all of them done, I did, um, I did approach a young speaker. And I approached two other prominent speakers. And one of them lives here in Palm Springs. And I just said, "I have a suggestion for you. I understand the issue. But what about if we stop labeling? What do you think? Don't you think that's going to reduce the hostility and make every person aware that we are valuable human beings? We're all one community? And move forward? And I assure you, you should see the look on their face." And actually, a speaker who's very prominent looked at me and said, "Well, that's all what we know we do, to be, to be even." I said, "You're not going to be even if you keep using different words and put ourselves in different boxes." I'm going to start the movement, hashtag no labeling, and see where it goes. And the other situation is, and just want to let you know, I was born in, in war country. So, I'm not just talking just out of my head. I experienced war. I experienced racism. I experienced hardship. And I'm very thankful to come here and work hard and establish a living. The last thing, I honestly think the communication, the some of the wordings that the council, going through City Hall, is causing divisions within our community. Who are we? What's our experience? What's our background to comment on the policing? Or ask the police what they're doing, what they're not doing? I mean, I'm an immigrant. I went the same thing through you did. So, stop labeling me. Stop labeling everybody. And by you attacking the police, in my opinion, and some of the words I've heard, it, you're really encouraging the young minds that you use to just respect the police officers. I was raised, when I see a police officer in a blue uniform, there is a respect. When I talk to my teacher, I respect because I know that have authority and they can influence. So, let's just get rid of labeling. Let's just stop talking about policing, and we want to show them how they do their job. I, I challenge a couple of you to get in the car and work as a police for a week. And then I'll see what you say about policing. Thank you, and I'm very glad you have this forum. And, um, and I hope that the City Council narrow their subjects. Because if you keep dividing us by words, it's going to backfire. Thank you. Enjoy your afternoon.
Thank you. And, uh, just as a reminder for those of you who may be watching on TV or, or on YouTube, uh, we do now have a capacity to add more people into this Zoom meeting. So, if you would like to join and provide your public comments, uh, through this forum, you're welcome to, uh, join us. And those of you who have already provided public comment, again, I'll provide the hyperlink to the YouTube channel, and that will, uh, provide more capacity to add more people to the meeting. And the next speaker will be Scott J.
Hi, everybody, and, um, thank you for hosting this, um, listening session. I'm fairly new to the Palm Springs area. I just moved here last year and couldn't be happier to be here. Um, but, so, with that being said, as, as a new resident, I can't really speak to the history of the, um, of the situ, the local, um, situation here that is being discussed. Um, but, um, I, I would just like to make a couple of points really quickly, um, about, um, one, about the policing and, um, suggesting that they be defunded or, um, look at different ways of, uh, responding to calls with, uh, mentally, mentally ill people or homeless people. I have a sister who was formerly a police officer in, in another state. And, um, she had, uh, said that they actually had social workers that went along with police officers on calls where there were, uh, known people who were, you know, because they often get repeat calls from people who are mentally ill or homeless. And so, they would bring social workers along to deescalate the situation, um, so that it did not require any, um, weapons being drawn on the part of the police. But, um, the situation is, uh, because the person they're dealing with can often have a weapon or be a danger to themselves or other people, a social worker is ill-equipped to deal with that, uh, on their own. So, this cannot be just an either-or situation. You can't have, um, just social workers responding to these types of calls. Uh, the police need to be there sort of as a backup. So, I think people need to be careful about, like, looking at this as an either-or situation. And then, um, one other thing I'd like to mention is that, um, you know, I, I also, um, you know, can't really speak to racism, uh, being a white guy, but although I've witnessed it with my friends, um, I, I'm not, I guess I don't consider myself a quote-unquote typical, um, white guy, if you will. Uh, uh, even though I was born in Arkansas, which, um, you know, everybody can in, insert their own stereotype there as they wish. But, um, a very small town of less than seven hundred people. Uh, and the only black man in the whole town was the town doctor, who basically gave birth, I mean, he didn't give birth to me, but he helped me become into this world uh, over two months premature. And I would have died had it not been for him. He was obviously the most intelligent man in, in town. Uh, but, you know, that just, that just sort of set me on a course in my childhood that, um, even from an early age, I took an interest in, um, other cultures and other types of people besides the family that I grew up in, even though I have to admit I was raised in a very racist community that, um, you know, it, it was clearly racist environment that I was, but I was able to break out of that because of my interests. And I went on to actually major in anthropology and studied cultures around the world. And, um, and eventually went on to work as a social worker and a hospice caregiver. And I've worked for, you know, I took care of thousands of people, and I helped about five hundred people die, uh, go through the dying process. And when you're holding somebody in your arms, or somebody's in need, they need food, or shelter, or medicine, or they're dying, and you're holding them in your arms, race is, race is the last thing on your mind, uh, truly. At least it was for me. And, um, so, I would, I would just like to say that, um, you know, I know that it's a hot-button term to use reverse racism, and that gets a lot of people fired or canceled. But I would just like to say that, um, I, I'd just like to put it out there that don't assume, because I'm an old white guy, that, uh, I'm, I'm a, I just, I'm a white supremacist, or that I'm racist. Because, you know, all of us need to look more than skin deep and look at the person, uh, inside. And just as a, um, very recent anecdote, um, yesterday, we had, I live in a mobile home park in South Palm Springs with about two hundred units here, mostly white. There are a few, um, black people who live here. I, I don't know if there's any Latinos or not. But we had the tree trimming crews come through, as they do every year, um, apparently, to trim the palm trees. It was, you know, Latino, uh, men working on this tree trimming crew. And when they came to my house, my home, I set out a, um, ice chest of ice, and some iced tea, and some water, and a big bowl of sliced watermelon. And you know, it, it, you could just see the, the smile on their faces, even though everybody was wearing masks and everything. We were all wearing masks and, and you could tell that that, just that kind gesture meant so much to them. Because I, I can almost guarantee you that I'm the only person in this whole park of two hundred people that made that sort of gesture. These people were working in hundred-and-ten degree heat, trimming those stupid palm trees. So, I'd like to end that on, just, each one of us can just be the change that we want to see in the world. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker will be Abigail, I'm sorry, Abigail Winston.
Hi, um, I am, um, new to Palm Springs, so I, I can't speak to the history. I am white, so I can't speak to, um, how the community, um, minority community feels here. But I have heard today a, a lot of, or some of how they feel. Not a lot, actually. It's been mostly, I think, um, the majority white community who's been speaking. And so, I just want to say that what I have heard is that they feel afraid of the police and minimized in the community. And I appreciate, um, the City Council doing what they have done and having this listening session. But I think we as, um, people in America need to start to reflect on the fact that, you know, racism makes us feel bad, especially white people, that we could be racist. But the problem is not us individually. It's that racism exists in the systems. And this is something that hopefully the City Council can address um, in a more specific way. And so, I don't know how, I don't know the solution. But I think that inviting, um, those people who feel disenfranchised and who feel, um, afraid of the police into the conversation and really digging into what they would like to see is where we should begin. And then, as far as us white people, what we... And then as far as us white people, what we should be doing is understanding that we are all a part of this. And again, the statute seems to be a minor issue, but actually not recognizing what, what has happened in the past and not apologizing for it and not being able to move forward from there. I think if you were the person that was affected, you wouldn't think it was minor. And so that is something also that we can all do, and I would suggest we do it. I, I like Palm Springs. I haven't been here very long, but I want to be a part of the community. But I want to feel like we're all the same community. And I think we have to do, we have to do that together. That's all.
Thank you, and the next speaker will be Deb Sather.
Hi, my name is Deb, and I am a longtime resident of the Palm Springs area. I did live in Cathedral City for a short time, but I've lived in Palm Springs the majority of my 27 years here. I do work for the school district, and I have had multiple interactions with the police department, all of which have been mostly positive. I, I have worked with some students who have emotional disabilities that are assaultive to school staff. And I have always seen positive interactions between the police department and the students that were in need. These students needed a lot of help, and the police department was very understanding. I totally support our Palm Springs Police Department and, and believe that maybe they do need some additional support through the city council in the areas of additional staffing, not cutting of positions, not removal of positions or removal of funding, but maybe some additional financial support to increase staffing in the areas of social workers and whatnot, instead of removing what we already have. Let's add to it, let's build, and provide that additional support to the citizens. My other concern is, you know, I can drive down the street, two blocks from my home. I live in a great neighborhood. I love it. It is multicultural, multiracial, and absolutely love this neighborhood. And I, but I can go two blocks away and find somebody smoking their crack pipe. Or not just casual use of marijuana, but hard drugs. And those police need to be out there, being supported and not cut down by other citizens or city council members. I strongly support them. I believe that they are doing a fine job. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, and the next speaker will be Joy Meredith.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Joy Brown Meredith. I moved here to Palm Springs in 1978, and I love living in this community. In 1997, I joined, we started the Police Advisory Board. I'm still on that board with a lot of other great community members. It represents many different communities. I also am the mother and grandmother and mother-in-law of some, of some people in the community that I have seen with my own eyes that they have been treated differently than I've been treated. My granddaughter recently, who is biracial, she was with her man and two children in the car. And they were pulled over because of a taillight, and they wanted identification of her man in the backseat. He is a black man. She called me during this police stop, and she was horrified. She was so frightened, and I was very sad to hear that tone in her voice, that she had to have that kind of fear right there. She was just leaving work at Joy Life, and they wanted to know what she was doing there in that neighborhood. It turned out okay. She went home. My son-in-law, he was pulled over last year near Target. They said that he had a dim taillight, also an African-American man, somebody that I trust my life with, by the way. And although there was no violence involved, it was a very horrifying experience there as well. Now, I am a great supporter of the Palm Springs Police Department. But that does not mean that there aren't instances where people are treated differently because of the color of their skin. And I want to tell you, though, that it is possible to support Black Lives Matter and to support the police department. These do not have to be things that are separate from each other. We need to look deeper and make sure that everybody is being treated fairly. It should not matter what the color of their skin is. And I think that's a pretty juvenile statement for me to even make. Of course that shouldn't matter, but it does. When I go to the Desert Highland Communities Neighborhood Meeting, and I'm hearing a man tell me, or talk about, that he had to call an ambulance for his father because his father fell and hit his head, that he waited, he looked outside, he could see the ambulance down the street. But the fact of the matter is, the ambulance does not come there without a police escort. Now, I don't know about you, but that is not okay. I realize that that neighborhood may be viewed upon as a crime-ridden neighborhood. But the fact of the matter is, if you want to see a real community, you go to Desert Highland, because Desert Highland is where neighbor sticks up for neighbor. So sometimes do some things happen that the police want more information? Yes. Is that neighborhood going to give it up? Probably not. They're going to deal with it internally? Because this is a neighborhood that knows its neighbors. They know the good eggs and the smelly rotten ones. And they're going to handle it, because they trust each other, because they love each other. And that is the fact of it. I wish my neighborhood was as loving and caring as the Desert Highland neighborhood is for its neighbors. For those of you who have not experienced it, I really suggest that you do. The James O. Jesse Center there, I am so proud. When I was on Parks and Recreation, that we made sure that that center became something very special. And my name is on the plaque outside of there. And every time I go there, I couldn't feel more proud to be a part of that. And Grace, I want to tell you something. You are doing a great job. And I didn't know you before, but I know you now, and I see your heart, girl, and you are different. You are certainly one of those people that has not been a politician, but you just come in loving the community. And I know that people in the community support you and what you are representing there. And so I just want to really say, I, I think it's just so important to understand. We can support the police and support the community. But we need to take a deeper look to make sure that there are no rotten eggs in the police department that are treating black people, or other people of color, or gay people, or transgender people, any differently than they would treat anybody else. And that is the crux of the problem. And I'm here to tell you, whatever I could do to help, I will, just like I always have. All of my children have married into racial families. All of my grandchildren and grandchildren are biracial. When you live with it, it is different than just watching it in the news. And I just want to tell you, I love you very much. Janelle, I love you. You're beautiful. It's nice to see you here. Thank you very much for giving me this time to speak. We could do it, because we are Palm Springs, and don't let anybody tell you different.
And the next speaker will be, there was a little technical issue, but the next speaker's going to be Naomi Soto.
Hi, my name's Naomi Soto. I'm a District Four resident. I'm in the Sonora Sunrise neighborhood. And I appreciate the opportunity to share some thoughts on policing and discrimination and just that we're doing this. And as a resident of the city, and definitely as an overall supporter of the Black Lives, Black Lives Movement, Black Lives Matter movement, this moment we're experiencing and these sentiments, they're, they've been bubbling for a long, long time. And I, and I just kind of want to put a little bit of, like, how I, the big picture how I see or what I'm noticing. So we're like a public health, a racial, and an economic reckoning, all at the same time. And Palm Springs is like most cities in America right now, experiencing this at the same time. But I just don't understand why some members of the council are so reticent to examine the police budget and its policies when we're experiencing such a dire fiscal emergency and our city reserves have been really essentially running on fumes right now. That, that's, that's kind of what I'm feeling, but that's actually not what I want to talk about. I just want to talk about the process overall that I find very interesting, and I haven't seen happen too much. So while it's so valuable and so great that the council's listening to residents, in particular, the experience of black residents and people of color, it seems to me that to hear any police criticism, or just an examination of its budget, the council's expecting residents to tell them that racism is real in the city. And before we can even have a conversation on 21st century policing, our city needs to hear from residents about their experiences with police, almost be re-traumatized and retelling their stories with police and discrimination. And I wonder if this is expected on other issues, right? Where this public expectation of, or this public grievance is expected on other issues. And it seems to me like I, I haven't seen this on other issues. If there's issues around, I don't know, something comes up in one Palm Springs, I've seen council members take that action on it. If there's issues around cannabis business, or priorities for downtown economic development, Main Street group kind of brings it up and action is taken. Like, that's, that's the power of these like little groups of people who know the issue so, so well. But when it comes to black residents and people of color raising issues around police and discrimination, concerns about the budget, the burden of proof just seems so much higher. And I would ask my fellow residents to think about why this is expected. I would ask our city council members to think about why not just hearing from Desert Highland residents firsthand in their own meetings hasn't been enough of a fervor to kind of move some action and examination on the police budget? Why, why haven't the stories that have been told already been enough to move any action? We have momentum right now, and I'm so glad we're, as a city, all kind of coming together. But when, the stories seem to be so much louder, and all in unison, when it's an issue on race, when it's not expected on other issues, it, it feels very uncomfortable to me. And the ask feels very uncomfortable to me. So that's kind of what I wanted to raise, and that's what I wanted to share. And that's my public comment, and I think, and my husband has his own, his own thought.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members, I want to start off by saying that I live and work here in Palm Springs. I've worked here for seven years, and I am a homeowner in Palm Springs. My wife and I are expecting a baby, and we look forward to being parents in this town. We both have degrees in public communications and public policy and have looked very closely at the issues of policing here in our city. I've had a few brief opportunities to meet with and work with Chief Reyes over the years and to watch his annual presentations on the work of the police force. I have great respect for him and his leadership. At the same time, I've spent many hours looking closely at the Palm Springs budget and the allocations that have gone to policing. I've also spent hours analyzing and comparing our budget to the budgets of other cities and the nation overall. I've grown concerned that our city, especially in a time of budget crisis, is spending far more on policing than it should. We spend almost twice as much as the national average, and about 40% more than our state average here in California. I've tried to understand why this is, and if other cities do the same, and for what reason. I've yet to find a meaningful explanation for why Palm Springs needs to spend so much more than other cities on policing. It's not about our seasonal visitors, because other cities with seasonal visitors do not spend the way we do. It's not because of our size, because other cities of our size do not spend the way we do. It's not because of being a tourist town, because other tourist destinations do not spend the way we do. We overspend, and that's a problem, because we have limited resources in this city. We overspend, and that's a problem, because police will police, whether they're responding to a critical public safety issue or being called on for quality-of-life issues, which we have, almost half of our calls for service are related to that. Policing, where policing isn't required, or isn't the best solution, can lead to high-stakes situations that become dangerous for our citizens, for our visitors, our tourists, and for our police themselves. It can also lead to abuse. We overspend, and I want to know why. I want to hear from our city leaders why our city must spend more on policing than other cities. Make the case. Defend your arguments and your position. Please look at the numbers honestly and openly. And if you believe we need to spend twice as much as the national average, make your case. If you believe we need to spend 40% more than the state average, make your case. If you believe we need to spend over $200,000 per person within the police department, make your case. Lisa Middleton, please make your case. Dennis Woods, please make your case. Mayor Coors, please look honestly at the numbers and make your case. It's not enough to say we have a lot of visitors. How many visitors? For how long? How does this compare with other cities? What is the reasoning? Where is the scrutiny? Thank you, Grace, and thank you, Christie, for being willing to look at these numbers and to listen to these voices today. Voices that aren't just talking about budget and numbers like I am, but who are talking about issues like race and abuse that arise from the city council's funding of police. As city council, the police are all of your responsibility. You are responsible for their funding, and you are responsible for their conduct. Thank you for listening today, but it can't stop here. We need action. Look today at why our budget is higher than other cities, and really try to find if there are legitimate reasons why that needs to stay the case. You have to reauthorize that budget next month, and the month after that, and the month after that. What can you do now to bring our budget more in alignment so that our spending on police isn't such an outlier? What can you do now so that we can address public safety issues in our city using other best practices? Police aren't the best solution to homelessness. We know that. Police aren't the best solution to substance abuse issues. Police aren't the best solution for quality-of-life calls. They are key to responding to critical public safety problems, but they're not the only solution. Please be innovative. Please be leading voices for change on this as you have been for LGBTQ rights, as you have been for a whole number of issues that makes Palm Springs such a great place to live. We have the capacity to be great on this, too. And with a police chief like Chief Reyes, I would hope you would find a willing partner in reform that can make our city safer for everyone. Thank you for listening. Please take action on what you hear today. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, it's 1:00, and there was an indication that we would like to take a break at 1:00. For those people who are still in the queue to speak, and anybody else who's still in the meeting, while we do take the break, you're welcome to stay in the meeting. You don't need to rejoin or anything like that. Mr. Mayor, I defer, go back to you.
Sure. 10 minutes give people enough time? Or do you want 15? 10? One will be 10, so people can grab 10. I'm getting a mix of 5 and 10, so let's go with 10, so people can grab something if they need something to eat or anything.
Quick break.
Yeah, but we'll be back. It's 1:05. Please, we'll start again at 1:15. Thanks. Thanks.
And we'll go ahead and resume in just about one minute.
Perfect, thank you. We're all here, so let's move forward. Thank you.
If I can ask before we begin to announce if other people want to join, how to do so, so that people who are watching on YouTube or at home might be able to join and give public comment if they want to. Thank you.
Yeah, so if anybody's been listening or watching on TV, you're welcome to go to www.palmspringsca.gov/listeningsession, or if you're on our homepage, at the bottom left corner, there's "In the Spotlight," you can click the link there. That will go to the landing page for this listening session, and there is a hyperlink so you can join the Zoom call. In addition, we do have a number of speakers that pre-registered for public comment, and just out of fairness, we're going to go ahead and take those calls now, and then we'll resume with those who are in the queue for public comment. Just give me one second, and we'll start getting the queue started. The first caller is not interested in speaking anymore, so let's go ahead and take Juan Espinoza while we get the first caller on the line.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for making the time and the space for us to have this opportunity to speak, and thank you for everyone who stuck around. I know it's past one on a Saturday, and we'd all like to have our Saturday, so I really appreciate the council putting this together and putting in the effort and the time to support this very important forum in time. I want to say, I grew up in Palm Springs, I went to Kawhi Elementary School, I went to Raymond Pre-Middle School, I went to Palm Springs High School, and I'm now at Harvard Law School precisely because of the many issues that I lived and saw and experienced in Palm Springs. My mom cleans houses, my dad's a waiter, both of them have been in the service industry since the 70s in Palm Springs, and I have very vivid memories of my mom coming home crying because she cleaned houses for someone that was mad that she was taking a break to have a sandwich, or that my dad was being harassed by the police, or that he was followed because he was in an old beat-up truck or in an old beat-up car. And all of these incidents have been not an exception, but rather the norm in Palm Springs. I myself was a waiter and busboy at many restaurants in Palm Springs where, in some of them, which I'm sure many of the city council frequent often, busboys that were Mexican were called cockroaches, and there were many very racial slurs used for the Mexican service staff. And if you ever go to a restaurant in Palm Springs, you know that the kitchen is usually full of Mexican immigrants that are doing the hard work, and you see Mexican immigrants doing the work out landscaping, they're building our cities, they're landscaping, everything you see, the beauty in the desert is built by these communities, and yet we have incidents such as this person that has now gone viral, who approaches them and attacks immigrants, asking them for their papers. And that's not something that is surprising for someone like me, because I grew up, even at Palm Springs High School, where when we were fighting for immigrants, people were calling me a wetback at Palm Springs High School. And so I think, I'm really upset to hear that some of the comments are saying that we're on a bandwagon, or that this is just an opportunity for us to address racism, when some of us have built our entire lives around fighting these issues. And I've seen this in so many ways, and I think I'll get to the police in a moment, but I think we need to address the way that this permeates so many aspects of the city, and address the fact that, for example, being at Palm Springs High School where it was 50% Latino, I was one of like three Latinos in the APN Advanced classes. Why aren't we addressing those disparities? I had to fight tooth and nail even to get into advanced classes. When I had the testing scores, I was wrongfully put in lower-level classes, and I had to go to administration. Had I not had the will to do that, I wouldn't have been tracked into a track that would lead me to college. And there are so many of those disparities with counselors pushing students of color to the side, with the fact that the school-to-prison pipeline is a real and existing reality, and for those that are not familiar, I did that research later on in college, and I wrote an op-ed about it in 2012, so that was eight years ago, and it just looks at the way that Black and Latino students are funneled into suspensions and expulsions, and then end up in the criminal justice system because we funnel them there. And that's precisely why there's an issue with having school resource officers, the fact that the Palm Springs Unified School District spends $645,000 on school resource officers. In Palm Springs alone, the Palm Springs Police Department gets $150,000 for staffing a police officer at the high school. And I think it's just unfortunate that students have to interact with police officers before they even get to see what a college looks like. And I think that's wrong, and that sends the wrong message to our community, and I'm sure you wouldn't see police officers stationed at mostly-white, private schools, because we know that that's not something that's a healthy thing for children. And so I think it's just completely outrageous, the amount of money that we spend on police officers and that we put them in schools. And the reason I give all this background is because this is such an entrenched issue, and it's so complicated, and there's so many facets of this, and the city just refuses, or has refused for the longest time, and I'm really thankful for the more recent response that we've had, and that's thanks to newer council members that, like Grace and Christie, who have been so, so, so supportive of our community, and it's incredible to finally see some response. And to those of you that are not listening, or that are hesitant and want to hold on to the older ideas of what it means to run a city, I beg you and I ask you in good faith that you actually pay attention to the issues that are coming up. I think that there are so many ways that I can describe the ways in which I've experienced racism in Palm Springs, but I think looking at the police and looking at what's happening right now with COVID, it's extremely aggravating and extremely distressing to see how this is decimating the Black and Latino community. And if you look at the numbers in Palm Springs, and I know that a lot of people have talked about where they live in the desert, but I think we need to rethink the way that we address how interconnected the valley is, and the fact that Black and Latino workers are a part of Palm Springs, and working for hotels, and being affected, and being risked due to the fact that we've reopened too early, and that we've had irresponsible county policies. And so if you look at the numbers, there's like double, triple numbers in mostly Latino cities in the desert, where if you look at Palm Springs and mostly-white cities, the numbers are much, much less. And it's sad to see how bad that is, and one of the things that I've heard is that, oh, Latinos aren't paying attention, but I think that we need to really look at who's actually being exposed, and the fact that we live in more condensed spaces, that we have bigger families. If you look at the average household size in Palm Springs, it's two people, but the average household size in Coachella and Indio is four people. That's double. And then you directly see that that's why partially there are double the cases there, because when Latino communities are impacted, the impact is far greater because of the ways in which we are exposed. And that's a systemic issue, that is a precise example of systemic racism, and something that we need to address.
One more. Yeah? It's been about five minutes.
I'm gonna, okay, I'm gonna close off by saying that I'm here first and foremost to be in solidarity with Black people, and in this moment, that we should have a reckoning with the way that we address police. And I had two Black women as my English teachers in high school, Ms. Dag and Ms. Hawkins, who set me up for success and have really informed my perspective, and I'm so thankful for them. And I want to be here for the Black community and say that I think we should be doing a lot more to shift resources away from the police, and towards mental health, towards community services, towards healthcare, and that's what public safety means and should look like during this pandemic and this crisis. And I think we can do much, much better as a city. Thank you.
Thank you, and the next speaker's gonna be, and the next speaker's gonna be Joanne Crawford. Joanne, you're live with the council, and you can begin your comments.
Oh, thank you for having me, concerning the body cameras that took us eight years to get. If the police do not have their body cameras on, they should be suspended without pay for three days. They cannot make an arrest without their body cameras on. And if Palm Springs Police does have a bad app in there on the force, they should remove him. We have a beautiful police department, we don't need one bad app for the spark of the whole bell. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford, and we'll disconnect.
Okay.
And the next speaker is going to be Melissa Dolores. Melissa, you're live with the council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments. I'm sorry, not two minutes, you have approximately three minutes to provide your comments. Give me one second, I'm sorry. Okay, you can begin.
Hello, Palm Springs Mayor, Mayor Pretem, and city council members. Thank you so much for putting this on today, I really appreciate it. I know it's past time. My name is Melissa Dolores, I'm born and raised here on the north side of Palm Springs, and I recently moved back after graduating from UCR. And like I said, I really appreciate you all for holding this listening session. I am calling for the people that are afraid to, that have been intimidated, and that couldn't be here today, to once again plead for you all to listen to Palm Springs residents when we say defund Palm Springs Police Department, and allocate funds into the community, fund parks and recs, fund after-school programs, fund programs for people that actually live here, give back to the community, and honestly, give our Black folk and Black community the reparations they need for burning down their homes and ruining their lives. How many more stories do we have to tell about our gross misconduct of police officers? Do I continually have to tell you how we as children were harassed by police, how my brother had guns drawn on him from walking home? I don't understand, how many more times do we have to relive our traumatic experiences for you guys to actually do something? Does it make you feel good for us to constantly tell you about every single bad experience that we had from Palm Springs Police Department? You see, when the Palm Springs Police Department should be downtown protecting our streets, right? No, they're not, they're harassing us on the north side of Palm Springs. But of course, you wouldn't know that, because you guys have never walked in our shoes, can only imagine. The other day, I saw six police officers pull over one man, one man. I don't know about you, but that's textbook over policing. I also want to mention at the last city council meeting, when we all expressed our feelings and our stories about defunding the Palm Springs Police Department, it was extremely dismissive that a council member, after everything that was just said, said that our police department is exemplary, that they're amazing officers, and all these other things. The fact that you dismissed us, like that council member Middleton, was truly, truly just, I have no words, I was so furious. How could you defend them after everyone just said they were followed by police officers because they were in an old beat-up truck, that you could defend, if we're literally telling you, we're telling you our expenses, and for you to be dismissive, that was truly, truly just disrespectful. And I yield my time.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. The next speaker will be Azernal Black. Azernal, you're live with the council, and you have approximately three minutes to provide your comments.
You're live with the council, and you have approximately three minutes.
Azernal, can you hear me?
Yes, but I hear a lot of noise on the television.
Yeah, if you could mute your television, then that would help.
Okay, I'm Evernell Black. My name is Evernell. My dad started coming to Palm Springs in the winters, in the 40s, for health reasons, and he came permanently in 1953. And after I'd gone to college for two years in Texas, I decided to come for a visit. I was so disappointed to see that the living conditions on Section 14 was so much worse than in Texas, a little town who now has only a little better than 6,000 people in it. So I decided to stay and work a year before going on back to college. And I found in 1956, 57, that Black people could only do service work, the same that they were doing in Texas. The only difference was the pay. My parents left Section 14 in 1961, and that was before the city official became violent. I came back to Palm Springs in 1963, to live permanently, and after some picketing was taken place, we got here in Palm Springs the first Black grocery clerk at Alpha Beta, the first Black waitress at Hamburger Hamlet, the first Black bank teller in Palm Springs. So during that period of time, we got our first Black teacher, who had experience, had been working for years as a teacher. When she came to Palm Springs, she had to work as a student teacher, and she was given a stipend rather than a salary. But I also find something that disturbed me is that Palm Springs has had a high school since 1938, 39, and the first Black student to graduate from college was 1960, Charlie Jordan. That was appalling to me. I wanted to work when I couldn't get a job here in Palm Springs, other than I made, I tried to get a job at the telephone company, and because I'd gone to school for two years, they said I was overqualified. That was a stab in the back. I never had any personal confrontations with the police department, but my children would talk about from time to time and their friends, how the police would just harass them. And they had a white friend who joined the police department, and he got off the police department because he was tired of the police harassing his Black friend. But all of us recognize the fact that we need the police department, but we also recognize that there is a difference in how Blacks are treated and the other people. We're treated not only within, and our citizens as well, because the white man would get a slap on the wrist, and the Black man would go to prison for 10 or 15 years. So we know that there's a difference. But my real problem today is the cross-sleeve road change. I have heard every excuse in the book as to why it's not been done, even to the fact that his name is too long to go on the sign, but we know that that's not true. We recognize the fact that we're in the police department, we must have, but one of the things that we have to realize is that there is the golden rule. We want to treat each other as we have been treated. And so one of the things that I want you to know here on this day is, and I want to ask this question, is why are we, as Black people, so hated? What have we done to cause you to hate us so much? Thank you for the opportunity to share with you today.
Thank you, Evernell, we'll disconnect. Okay, the next speaker is gonna be James Coffey. Mr. Coffey, you're live with the council, and you have approximately three minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and it's Coffey, not Coffey.
Sorry about that.
Yeah. I just wanted to express my view regarding the Bogart statue, and I know this isn't the perfect time for this, but it was something that a few other people have mentioned today. I think, I want to echo some others that have written to you, and I wrote a letter to you as well, that I think we need to have a forum on this issue, where the historical record and firsthand testimony of those who were there and have personal knowledge of this issue with Section 14 especially, can be presented in an honest way. And I think maybe we should wait until we can do that in person. There are a lot of historical folks, and people who knew Frank, and people who knew firsthand what happened at Section 14, and all the great things he did for our city that need to be said. So I'm just, again, my vote is to have a forum, where facts can be presented, and surely our stories and perceptions may be different, but that's all good, we can educate everyone, and we can have a meaningful discussion about all this. Those are my thoughts, and thank you for having me, and thank you for putting this on, it's been very good thing for our city.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect.
Bye-bye.
The next speaker is gonna be Elizabeth Dolores. Elizabeth, you're live with the council, and you have approximately three minutes to provide your comments.
I just wanted to quickly thank you guys for your time, but also to let you know that the fact that you guys keep funding the police department with all this money, I'm really upset about, because we could be investing it in other things instead of a friggin' militarized police chief that's just standing there in the police lot, and you know, the cops, I understand they do their job, they do all this, but I feel like they milk the clock all the time. I've gone to court several times on matters of jury duty, and they're here, you know, arrogantly explaining to people how they, you know, love court days, because then they can go do their overtime, you know, in the city. And, you know, we released a lot of good city workers that actually helped and keep and maintain our city streets clean and looking pristine, and, you know, we sacrificed them, and somebody needs to speak up and advocate for these city workers that we actually, you know, should be assisting. And then also, I mean, look at, you know, what's going on, you know, on the north side up there, there's no bathrooms up there, you know, there's still in my neighborhood, some of my neighbors that do sewer systems, we could be doing so much more with this money, and I'm really upset because you guys dismissed everything we said, our emails, our phone calls, and, you know, Lisa Middleton, you know, all of you guys that voted to fund the police, I'm really upset, and I just can't even find words that are, you know, that I can say without offending people about how I feel about this. And, you know, my tax dollars are not at work, and I'm really upset about what you guys are doing, and I want to thank Christie, and I want to thank Grace for standing up for us, the people that keep getting dismissed. And I'm over, you know, you guys dismissing us because of the color of our skin, or because of, you know, you think we're young and we're dumb, but we still, you know, provide for our city, we still pay our city taxes, and then, and at that time when we pay our city taxes, you guys have no problem with us and accepting our money, that you guys don't accept what we have to do, and that is appalling, and I am really upset, and that's it.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. The next speaker is gonna be Clifford Reed. Clifford, you're live with the council, and you have approximately three minutes to provide your comments.
Okay, we're gonna speak on discrimination and racism in America. America has been doing this for generations. State and city has followed. It's time for us to stop. Black Americans, Native Americans, and Mexican-Americans have contributed a great deal to this country, and they should be judged as Americans, and not some aliens from a different world. It's time for this racism to stop, and treat everybody fair. We have contributed, we have built this nation to where it is right now, and it cannot be a great nation if all the races are not accepted. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, were you done?
I'm done.
Okay, thank you, and we'll disconnect. We are waiting for the next speaker to join us by phone, so we'll go ahead and move on to Courtney. Courtney, if you could unmute your mic.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I am here to talk about the Frank Bogart statue, and in opposition of removal of Frank Bogart's statue in Section 14. I think there's a lot of misnumbers and rumors in regards to his statue in Section 14. I do want to add that Frank Bogart was a true advocate for minorities, and helping all tribal members go to Washington, DC, and to advocate for the tribal members to get a leased land for their lease, to extend from a five-year lease to a 99-year lease, and that we should not judge our past historical leaders on the hindsight of our now 2020 vision. So I know that this is a discussion that will probably extend, hopefully, to a larger platform in the future, and I thank the council members for their time, and I know a lot of our members on our Facebook page have been able to join us. We have a collection of over 1,700 members of all race orientations, genders, and philosophical beliefs within our group, and this has really brought a wonderful amount of community involvement to discuss this issue. And I welcome anybody who's interested to join in on the conversation, to join with our Palm Springs Facebook page group regarding people who knew Frank Bogart the best, and hear what their voices have to say in regards to, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm a mother of triplets, so they'll come in and out. So if you could please hear from people who knew him, instead of rumors, that would be wonderful, to join and listen in a non-political tone, so that we could set the record straight in regards to Section 14, which is obviously a hot-button topic. But I think the real change in location in regards to Bogart's statue really resides in the individual part, more than the location and the physical address of the statue. And our society, living in this 2020 vision, really needs to understand that we're granted this perspective because of our historical leaders of the past, and we cannot unbury our dead and hold them to the unchanging standard, different than our own. It's unreasonable, and it's unacceptable, and we have this great 2020 vision now, but the next greater vision will be 2030, and I don't know what we all will be held to in the next 10-year standard. So with that, I thank you for your time, and I yield the rest of mine.
Thank you, and the next speaker is gonna be Susan Smith. Susan, you're live with the city council, and you have approximately three minutes to provide your comments. Ms. Smith?
Good afternoon, Mayor Corrigan, council members. I would like to provide a little bit of input on policing, if I may. I attended the Palm Springs Citizens Academy a few years ago, and at that time, I learned so much about our local police officers and department, and all that they take care of for us to keep us safe and protected. One thing that I discovered is that a few years ago, they announced that they are three to four officers short on the force, and that they were offering a $10,000 bonus or incentive to bring in new officers, and unfortunately, because of our desert area being pretty limited as far as industry and so forth, we're not all that attractive of an area to work. and so forth, we're not all that attractive of an area to work. And most officers even today, I believe, even commute from distances of an hour away. So I think we need to add to our police officer force and perhaps because of current financials, maybe take away that substantial incentive and reduce it down. But I came to Palm Springs in 1957. I am a third-generation Palm Springs Realtor and so I've lived here for 63 years, grew up here. And I find that things have drastically changed and a lot of it has to do with the drug problem that started and the addiction problem that's really got very heavy from the early 1970s to the mid 1980s. And it's been an issue for years here and our police officers have, in the last couple of weeks, as you know, they have stopped cars for minor violations to find out that there are loaded guns, pounds of methamphetamine, and, you know, guys on parole who, for example, at the corner of Indian Canyon and I believe Racket Club. So they've made some wonderful arrests and they are protecting us and I think we need to applaud that. And then the other point is that while these BLM protests are allowable, what has happened with our police force is that while they have officers in the field at Francis Stevens Park or Ruth Hardy Park or where have you, they also have to double their backup force, you know, in case of, in case of a riot, you know, or things gone bad. So I want to say something about, you know, kudos to our police department. I do not think that our police department needs to take a knee for anyone. And I am shocked, you know, with that kind of rhetoric because look at Officers Vega and Zarese who sacrificed their life in service to us. And that whole incident was based upon a gang-related family, two brothers who were dealing drugs in Palm Springs near, out of a home near Vistacino and Sunrise. So that emphasizes my point and I'm sorry that some people here have felt harassed because they've been pulled over for a taillight that's out, but that's part of their job too because if they don't do that and there is an accident of some sort, then, you know, someone can say, well, why didn't you tell me or why didn't you ticket me, you know? And, yes.
It's been about five minutes.
Oh, well, I have just two more minutes, please. On behalf of Frank Bogart, I want to remind council that he arrived in Palm Springs at the age of 17 years old and in 1927. And he did provide a lot of service to our community. He lived among us, he lived in the same modest home for many, many years. And I know for a fact that he is a good man. And to point a finger at him for what happened with the redevelopment of tribal Alati land is wrong. And I really object to, again, all the rhetoric that we're seeing and I think that should...
Susan, if you could please wrap up, we do need to get to the next speaker.
Okay. Thank you very much for your attention. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi. Yes, hello.
You're live with the city council. You have approximately three minutes to provide your comments and you can begin now.
Okay, my name is Dottie Wilder and let me first say what I told the council before. I was listening to this issue this morning because I was... But as far as, my understanding is this is about racism. And as far as Frank Bogart and his statue, but he's a new Frank, would never classify him as a racist. And I think he was a great guy, present as in everything else for Palm Springs. But as far as racism, I don't know how you legislate that. And to me, it's nothing to do with skin color. It has to do with the way people act. And there's good and bad in every group. I have certainly been treated differently with the minority in the group around me in all different ethnicities and ways and whether it's work or out in public. So and as far as people being considered underprivileged, that usually has to do with the family you're born into and how much money they have. And in our society, supposedly if you work hard enough, you would get ahead and be able to accomplish more than that. If the government tax would often takes it away and gives it to somebody else, then you're not going to be able to get ahead and continue your life. So anyway, I just, I think it's been talked about, into the ground and the very people that claim to be put upon by other people turn around and do that themselves, sometimes much worse. And so I don't know, I don't know what the, I would legislate with that. But as I raised my kids, I did not describe people by things that could not change. One is their skin color, one is their height, one is their ethnicity. It is what it is, that's the way we were born and we make the best show of the life we have. And that's the way I think people should live their life. So anyway, that's my comment. And I hope you leave Frank Bogart's statue where it is.
Thank you, Dottie, and we'll disconnect.
Thank you. Okay, bye bye.
Doug Evans, you're live with the city council and you have approximately three minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. You know my name. I am a proud former employee of the city. I worked in the planning department for 26 years. I was involved in planning of all types, tribal relations, and lots of community meetings at Desert Island. And I agree with Joy about the warmth of those meetings. I got some of the best hugs in my career at the Desert Island Community Center. I also would like to thank the council members that have taken the time to talk to Natey Bogart. His story is much more complex than most people understand. As a new employee to the city, I was concerned. I did my homework, I read everything I could on Section fourteen, I read everything I could on tribal relations. Why? I had worked for the city of Long Beach and I focused for a couple of years on neighborhood planning, demographics, in some of the more challenged neighborhoods in Long Beach. If you look at Section fourteen, there were housing issues dating back to the Depression. The tribal council and its members asked the city for help. For over 10 years, many people served on the city council and the tribal council. They worked together to try and come up with solutions. They contacted multiple agencies to ask for guidance and help. The first eviction notices were in 1951 during the Korean War, just to kind of set the stage of where the country was. Poverty was serious, housing conditions were substandard. The tribe and the city worked very hard to try and change federal laws governing Indian land. Multiple mayors worked on that. Frank Bogart was instrumental in bringing government agencies and the private sector to make Section fourteen, the relocations, work as best they could for the times. Frank actually advocated for moratoriums on evictions. Again, 10 and a half years before the first person was moved in Section fourteen. At that time, funding sources were virtually nonexistent. The tribal leaders and the city council and the upwards of five or six mayors tried everything they could to pull something together. I'd like to stray a little bit. Somebody made a comment earlier about Frank Bogart being a conservator. He was a conservative conservator for one Indian. He was a teenager. That Indian called Frank because he trusted Frank and asked for help. When that Indian turned 21 years old, Frank relinquished his conservator position. He told the Indian, you know enough to manage your own property. That young Indian was a tribal chairman. He was a tribal chairman during the Section fourteen years that we've all been talking about. Frank was a leader, he's committed to the city, worked hard to represent all people. He respected people and judged people by their character, contributions, and accomplishments. He did this while being mayor and also in his private life. Those men and women who stepped up to be leaders of this city, risked criticism, show them the respect they are due. Hard decisions were made, people were affected, but those decisions were not made with malice. Look at the early leaders of Palm Springs, both city and tribal. They were amazing civic-minded people. They had strong personalities, they were passionate, they were competitors, but on big issues, they were collaborators. They came together to find, for the times, the best solution they could to move the city forward. Today Palm Springs is character and was built by a cast of characters. Without people like Frank Bogart and so many others, we may never have had the opportunity to live and work in Palm Springs as we know it. It may have just remained a place in the sand. Thank you for listening. We look forward to ongoing meaningful discussions about the city and its history. It is rich, it is complex, and we appreciate your time and we know that the city council works very hard and we thank you very much.
Thank you and we'll disconnect.
Thank you.
And the next speaker is Jenny Foote. Jenny, you're live with the council and you have approximately three minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you, council, for taking my call and thank you for all you're doing to keep us safe during this pandemic. I must say I'm immensely proud of my city and the people that have taken the time to speak up in this forum. I feel like I've listened to an anthropology TED Talk this morning and except for one very painful racist caller, this has been an absolutely inspirational experience. I'm not so proud, however, of the history of Palm Springs. Since moving to Palm Springs in the 90s, I had always admired the incredible mid-century architecture of our beautiful city hall. I could never understand why there was a statue of a cowboy mooring the front view of the building. So I did some research, I read about the history of the period that Mayor Frank Bogart led our city and I was, must say, horrified. Yes, our city grew into the playground of the stars under his tenure, but the horrors that were perpetrated on mostly minority working class of our city to get us there was unfathomable. Under Bogart's leadership, hundreds of families lost everything and he and the city council oversaw the burning of their homes and their possessions to clear out the squalor. His term from Section fourteen during that time, he was an executor of some Indian land and so he also got compensation. But he never gave compensation to help with the relocation or any other minor assistance, much less an apology was never provided to these families as they watched their homes and personal belongings go to flames. In 2016, I was on the city council and had the opportunity to request that the statue be moved. Unfortunately, the outcry from some of the old-time residents drowned out the call because of what seems to be finally an awareness of racism that has existed since the inception of our country. People are now looking at history, I think, in a different light. It's well documented that Frank Bogart was racist, homophobic, and misogynist. It is also well documented that the act was so horrendous, there was a necessity for an attorney general investigation. That investigation concluded that it was an egregious act of racism. I think now it's time to remove the symbol of hate from in front of what we should refer to as the people's building. It will not make up for all the pain and harm that has caused to many of the families that still live in Palm Springs or those that have moved since Palm Springs, nor will it erase the racism that existed then and still permeates our present. But what I think it will acknowledge is that we recognize the racism and we recognize the pain and are willing to act upon it by removing this symbol of hate. This does not negate the good that happened for our city when Frank Bogart was mayor. He was not the only one responsible for the horrendous acts of that time, but he is the only one with a statue in front of our city hall. So I asked the city council to remove the Bogart statue so that in this one small way, we acknowledge the harm that was done to so many of our fellow Palm Springs residents, both past and present. We cannot excuse this by saying that was then and this is now. It is time now to do that, to right that wrong. And thank you very much for all that you're doing and thank you to everyone who has participated on this call. It's been a real inspiration to me.
Thank you and we'll disconnect.
Thank you.
That does end the phone calls, so we'll go back to those in the Zoom forum. And the next speaker is going to be Renee Brown.
All right. My name's Renee Brown and born and raised in the city of Palm Springs. And I think we were trying to reach back and change this city, we're being pretty hypocritical. We need to go forward. And this council and the council before and the voters of Palm Springs voted in short-term rentals, which are the most socio-economically discriminatory policy that Palm Springs has ever had. In my neighborhood, I used to have a nurse, I used to have a mechanic, I used to have a hairdresser, I used to have a lot of people who could afford to buy homes in the desert park area. Today, nobody can afford to buy a home in the desert park area because as soon as a home becomes available, the short-term rental companies come in and buy them. So anyone, and you can ask the city employees, no city employee can afford to live in Palm Springs. You know, no, my children, who were born, raised, and went to Vistacino Monte, have to buy in Long Valley or leave the city. And why? Because we have a lack of affordable, middle-income rentals. Now, I won't get into the racism thing, but Palm Springs has always had two kinds of people. The very wealthy and those of us who work for them. And it has always been that way. You know, my family came here in 1948 and I don't see that we have done anything to change it. I would like us to hire local kids on that police force. We have College of the Desert that's training public service, firemen, you know, to be firemen and policemen. Why don't we hire those kids? When I was smoking pot at Sunrise Park, Nick Crawford used to pull up in his police car and say, Renee, I'm taking you home. You know, we, this short-term rental thing destroys community. You don't know your neighbor. On my block, I have three short-term rentals. That means I have three less neighbors and I have three less community people that I can bond with. You know, so, and this city council and Jenny Foote and the city council before are going to be held responsible for that socioeconomic discrimination. You know, I just do not see that we can hold one man accountable for something, a whole city council, the Chamber of Commerce, the Bureau of Tourism, all of those people wanted the people in Section fourteen gone because it was right on Indian Canyon and it disturbed our tourist business. You know, we all have, have to look... You know, we all have, have to look at some of the decisions that we make today. Why don't we have a fund for minority entrepreneurs who live in Palm Springs to start businesses in Palm Springs? Oh, God forbid we do something. You know, it's, it is time that we really address the problem and not try and look backwards. Anyway, thank you for letting me share.
And you and the next speaker will be Stephen Benson.
Uh, thank you for this forum. That shows a lot of courage. I have three specific questions regarding policing. Uh, last month, my two sisters and I, one sister teaches at Rancho Mirage High, the other teacher, other sister is a registered nurse at a prison, state prison in Norco. At that demonstration, which I see a lot of faces here that I saw there, people were masked, people were observing physical distance, and it was a celebratory, despite the subject, it was a celebratory gathering. We started that, there were community service officers in uniform and unarmed. When we finished, my sisters and I turned around to leave, and we saw ourselves surrounded by Palm Springs Armed Police. Okay? What I want to know is what was the message being sent, and also, how much did that cost our police department? The next question is, how many lawsuits against the Palm Springs Police are currently active? And what is the cost? Both the cost of defense and the cost of potential awards? In the past, how many lawsuits has the Palm Springs Police Department lost? And how much did that cost us? These issues must be addressed. Now, the next and most important issue I have to bring up is on the COVID-nineteen response. If we do not manage this pandemic, nothing else we do or talk about here will matter a lick. We need to bring back masking, and it needs to be enforced. If we need to pass a city ordinance that establishes a fine, if the police need money, let's give them thirty percent from every ticket they write for not being masked, for not observing distances, for opening a business that should be closed. This is important to me because I'm in several of the re, of the risk categories. I'm old, and I have COPD, and I recently went through a summer of chemotherapy. This disease will quite likely kill me, and it needs to be addressed. Thank you.
The next speaker will be Charlie Urban. Uh, Charlie? Charlie Urban?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Uh, if you could speak a little bit louder or get closer to your microphone, that would help.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
It's still pretty low, but we can hear you.
Okay. Hello, my name is Dennis Moore. Um, um, I'm here to talk about a situation that I have with Palm Springs.
I'm, I'm sorry, Charlie. I don't want to have, uh, the council missed opportunity to hear you. It's, it's pretty low to hear you. If you'd like, I'd be happy to give you a call, and then you can, um, provide your comments over the phone.
Can, can you give us a second? Can you hear me a little bit better now?
Now I can hear you much better.
Okay, give me one second. Let me do something really quick. Okay, can you hear me now?
Perfect.
Hello?
Yes, we can, we can hear you crystal clear.
Hello, my name is Dennis Moore. I'm going to be a freshman at Palm Springs High School in August. I'm a president of the Desert Highland Gateway Community. Um, I want to talk about an incident that I had with the Palm Springs Police Department. It happened, um, in November a couple of years ago. I was going out to my, um, uncle's car to get something, and all of a sudden, a police officer comes up and asks me what I was doing in the car and if I was stealing. And I just wondered, "Why me?" It kind of made me feel sad that that could happen to like a kid. That's all. Thank you for your time.
Charlie, was that all of your comments? Okay, I'm, I'm gonna move on. Okay, I'm gonna put you back on mute.
All right.
Uh, the next speaker is going to be Shonda.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi. Hi, I'm glad you can hear me. Um, I wanted to, uh, call to the attention that with, uh, the policing, with policing, first of all, uh, there's been a couple of incidences in the Desert Highland Gateway Estates community that the police have been called, and in that moment of the police being called, um, unfortunately, when the police come, they, uh, they don't arrest the person. They simply, um, guide that person away from whatever activity that they're doing, and, um, then people in the community don't feel like they're being heard. One, they call the police, the police come, the police don't arrest the person for doing something illegal, and the person is let go. Uh, there was an incident that there was some vandalism at the J O J. The police came, uh, that person was apprehended, the person came back, and people in the community felt like they were at risk. Again, that person was let go. Uh, that person wasn't arrested a second time. So, um, it's unfortunate that when, sometimes when the police officers come to the Desert Highland Gateway Estates Community meetings, um, they don't get, they don't come with a warm reception. Um, like, for instance, if a police officer is driving in the community, they don't wave to community members. They don't, uh, try to reach out in order to find out how community members are. It's just, they come across so rough. And, um, and in my interaction with the, with the police, um, I haven't had that kind of interaction before until I moved to, uh, Desert Highland Gateway Estates Community. I predominantly grew up in Los Angeles, in the Silver Lake area, and even when the police came to my house just to check on a, uh, a false alarm, they asked me why I chose to live in that community because I was from, uh, Silver Lake. So, um, there's a gap of communication with, uh, police officers being able just to talk to the community as human beings. A number of the community members don't even want to come on and talk because they've said this time and time again, like, for instance, the Bogart statue. It's offensive to a lot of people in the community, but we feel that we're not being heard with it being moved or taken down, preferably taken down. Uh, the community has spoken time and time again, saying, "Hey, this is affecting us. This is hurting us." And we are then reached with, "Oh, it's okay. Oh, it's not that bad." And it feels like it's falling upon deaf ears. I've lived into, uh, I've lived at, in Desert Highland Gateway Estates Community for a little bit over two years. Palm Springs has been wonderful, embracing me as their new Public Arts Commissioner. Um, and I am extremely happy and excited to, to contribute to the community and to Palm Springs in order to have art heal our community, but in order for us to do so, in order for us to all heal, we have to acknowledge that, that there is a problem happening, and we're not listening to each other. Please listen to the Black community and hear them when we say, "Enough. Move the statue." Please have the police officers come into the community with more respect. When they go to your community, they're fine. When they come to our community, they're not. Some of them are, some of them are not. So therefore, I feel that it's a time that we should all acknowledge, we've made mistakes in the past. This is a city that's ready to grow and move, uh, forward, and now is a time that we get to make these amazing changes in government, in our community, in our lives, that we get to be the people we wished our parents were, that they stood up more for racism. We have that opportunity now to change it in this city. We get to be the example that other cities look at and, and to take in consideration that, hey, if Palm Springs can do it, anywhere can. So please, let's take this time as human beings to join together and to listen to one another, to finally come together and say, "Okay, that was our past. This will be our new future." Joining together, coming together as a community, having these funds that the police haven't been able to utilize correctly, being put back into the community so the community can utilize it for mental health, for social programs. This is our time to shine. I moved to Palm Springs so I can make a difference, and I really love the community there, and Desert Highland Gateway Estates Community is a beautiful, wonderful community when you take the time to get to learn and know the people that live in the community. Don't judge them by the color of their skin. This is the time that Palm Springs gets to be the most amazing city. Please, please, I'm asking all of us to rise to the occasion and become the people to support one another and make Palm Springs a safer, happy, uniformed, harmonious place. Thank you.
Um, and for those of you who are watching on TV or other platforms, um, you can join the Zoom meeting and provide your public comments. Um, if you go to our website, uh, which is, um, palm springs ca.gov, and go to the spotlight, uh, there's the hyperlink to be able to join, uh, the Zoom meeting. Um, and our next speaker will be, uh, Dieter Crawford.
Good afternoon, uh, council, mayor, staff. Can you guys hear me okay?
Perfect.
Okay, uh, my name's Dieter Crawford. Uh, I'm a graduate of Loma Linda University Health, uh, San Manuel Gateway College. I currently work as a community health worker, uh, with Desert Clinic Pain Institute. I'm Vice President of Desert Highland Gateway Estates Community Action Association, and I'm also a board member of the Palm Springs Black History Committee. Uh, my family moved here to Palm Springs and settled on Section fourteen of the Agua Caliente Indian Reservation in nineteen fifty-one. Um, I just want to speak on the topic of systematic racism. Uh, the Black community has a long history of distrust with the city of Palm Springs, and it dates back to the evictions of Section fourteen. Uh, many other speakers before me have, uh, spoken on that as well. Um, we know the city was founded on discriminatory housing practices. Uh, there were deed restrictions that kept African-Americans and Latino families from living in certain parts of the city. And, um, I recently had the opportunity to read the Attorney General Report, um, from nineteen sixty-eight, which says, uh, "The city of Palm Springs not only disregarded the residents of Section fourteen as property owners, taxpayers, and voters, Palm Springs ignored that the residents of Section fourteen were, uh, human beings." Uh, the report called, called, uh, called it a city-engineered holocaust. And, uh, I work in public health. My background is in public health, and so we look at a lot of, lot of social determinants of health. And, uh, the history of Palm Springs has led to some of those disparities and inequities. Uh, you see it in the high incarceration rates. Uh, you know, uh, there's drug and gang raids targeting community members over the years. Um, we haven't seen those same type of stings or, uh, uses of force in other neighborhoods. Uh, a couple of years back, residence homes were raided at five AM with armored vehicles for, uh, minor drug offenses, uh, that members of the community committed. Um, you know, every time I'm stopped, uh, the police ask me, "Am I on probation or parole?" You know, uh, we know that the city is only five percent Black, but that, uh, thirteen, Blacks are thirteen percent of the rest. Um, we see that as well, dealing with the food desert issue. Uh, the nearest grocery store to Desert Highland is two point five miles, but, uh, we could easily get cannabis, alcohol, and tobacco, um, in a short walk. You know, uh, cannabis developments has basically taken over the neighborhood, uh, since two thousand and sixteen. There's been eleven city permitted cannabis businesses with no separation from residential neighborhoods. Uh, members of our neighborhood have been asking for outdoor restrooms at Desert Highland for many years, and, uh, we're the only park in the city that doesn't have outdoor restrooms. Uh, we even saw in the district elections that, uh, the demographer found racially polarized voting. Uh, we had a past mayor and one of the city council members who didn't even want to vote to switch to district elections. So, um, there's a long history of racism in the city, and it still exists as well. Uh, the encounters with the police in the community has been well documented. Uh, we often speak to them at our, uh, regular community meetings. Uh, we are the oldest organized neighborhood, uh, organization. We were founded in nineteen sixty-seven, uh, to fight these, uh, very issues we're talking about. Um, and I would just like to see the city take more of an equity approach, uh, to combat racism. Uh, there's a big difference in equity and equality. Um, you know, I'd like to see us invest in social programs, so recreation, uh, housing, education, physical and mental health, uh, you know, substance abuse programs. I'd also like to see us offering incentives for Black businesses and nonprofits, uh, see us award some city contracts to Blacks and minority businesses, but also, um, to offer workforce development training and, uh, job training in, as a couple of speakers before me said, invest in our residents. Um, when we say defund the police, we don't mean defund the police, uh, we mean reallocate the funding. And, um, I just want to thank you guys for having this meeting and, uh, giving us the time to have this forum and have this discussion. Once again, my name is Dieter Crawford. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And, uh, for those of you who, um, have joined the meeting recently, uh, if you do want to speak, uh, you'll need to hit the participants, uh, button, and then, um, the little three, three dots, go ahead and click that and raise your hand, and that will let me know that you're interested in speaking. Uh, we only have two left. Um, the first one is David Christian.
Hello, uh, Mr. Mayor and city coun, and council members. Uh, am I coming through okay?
Yes, we can hear you great.
Oh, okay, fine. Uh, um, I'll be mering some of the excellent comments that were made by Doug Evans, Renee Brown, and Jim Chiotti, all of them worked really hard for years in our lovely city. And, um, I've been a resident and architect here for over half a century. I first came out here in nineteen fifty-one with my parents, and if you've eaten downtown, you've probably eaten in one of the restaurants I designed. Uh, I was twenty-five years on the Palm Springs Architect Advisory Committee, a lot of other boards and committees, and planning commissioners, so I'm sensitive to a lot of the issues that you have on your side of the table. And I can truly say that I put my heart and soul into trying to make the city I love a better place for all of us to live. And, uh, regarding the moving of Frank's statue, I knew Frank Bogart personally for decades, and quite simply, nobody made Palm Springs the special place it is more than Frank. As a multi-term mayor, he, he literally put Palm Springs on the map, uh, internationally and, uh, nationally as well. And I feel the current location is appropriate to his overall history here. And one of the things that's difficult to communicate about Frank is he had an almost theatrically rough personal manner. He had a really dry wit and a warm heart, and he was often the most caustic and insulting to his closest friends. Uh, Rabbi Joe Hurwitz, who I knew well also as I designed Temple Isaiah, uh, was a favorite target and a worthy adversary for Frank. I mean, Frank had his hands full in trying to get ahead of Joe as far as pranks and insults. Uh, Frank was born in nineteen ten, a hundred and ten years ago, and unfortunately, obviously, most of his thousands of friends died decades ago. But in spite of that, there are over eighteen hundred to date in his Facebook support group and almost all of those knew Frank personally, and they speak of their affection of this special man with a lot of eloquence. I mean, I would really encourage a lot of the people that are on here right now to read some of those literally thousands of stories. Again, these are people that knew him well. As an aside on Frank as a racist, and I hope everyone will appreciate the humor of this, his first wife was Jewish. And some years later, someone was interviewing him and they took exception to him saying, if you really, this is quote, "If you really need to get something done, turn it over to a pretty Mexican woman," close quotes. And the person was offended and probably didn't realize that Frank happened to be married to a pretty Mexican woman. And so that probably didn't help his credentials as a racist a lot right there. But section fourteen was a terribly difficult situation and it's sadly, it's one of those things that it, that has played out thousands and thousands of times, not just across the country, but around the world. When I was the Palm Springs Planning Commissioner, a phrase that would come up at similarly diffi- difficult times was the greatest good for the greatest number. And that sort of path is why we have eminent domain as a legal principle, which enables del- development to be done with the greatest good for the greatest number. And it's sometimes a really painful process. And as you know, that process, uh, or the principle was implemented to accommodate difficult situations like section fourteen. And in this case, the section fourteen residents were eventually in an illegal status, and this is over a long period of time, and those evictions did not happen overnight as has been represented here. You have lots of history in, in hand and there's a lot more available to confirm this. Much of it is, will be part of the records of this meeting. I sent in quite a bit to, uh, to the city clerk. The Palm Springs Historical Society has volumes on this topic. And by the way, a police report in nineteen sixty-one stated that there were a hundred and fifteen family, quote, families of color, close quotes, displaced by the action. Uh, but there were three hundred and twenty-one white families displaced. Well, that's kind of an odd proportion for a, an action that was racially motivated. And I know, I have no doubt that, that it was a tremendous hardship and a, and a woefully tragic experience for the people that were, were involved, but it had to be done. And it wasn't done at the sole insistence of Frank Bogert, who is the villain, uh, of choice today. And it was, it was done by, by with the rest of the city officials and certainly done with the affected landowners, which were the members of the Agua Caliente Band of Cohil Indians who primarily wanted to develop the land and had everything to gain as the efforts of primarily by Ola Ordner, a, another wonderful pioneer, uh, who finally convinced the federal government to allow the trap to try to do long-term ninety-nine year leases on the property. There's an excellent book by her, by the way, that, uh, called You Can't Eat Dirt, that spends a lot of time on this exact topic. In fact, the first project to be built in section fourteen, once it was cleared, was a spa hotel, a massive shot in the arm for downtown Palm Springs and the, and the future image of the city. Again, this is a collective effort. Frank did not act on his own with regard to the city of Palm Springs participation in it. He did not have that power. That's another fact. And this has really hit a sore point with a lot of us who've lived here for many decades and helped build this city. We feel our, our history is now being grossly misrepresented. It takes a long time here to have somebody honor you with the insult of being a desert rat and even to have the term long-term resident applied to your name. And a lot of the, a lot of us carry those terms with a fierce pride. Well, I know we're in difficult-
It's, it's been about five minutes.
Oh, sorry. I'll wrap it up a couple of sentences. I know we're in difficult times. There's nothing that, uh, but we feel this can't be handled by a Zoom, uh, a Zoom meeting. Uh, my first hope would be that the documented facts of this are examined and that the statue remains where it is. But if it goes to more formal action, we'd really like a formal venue where we can show our support for Frank and the normal cha- uh, council chambers really won't come close. Uh, I think we got a great police department and, uh, I would just suggest everybody, oh, also had a great relationship with Reverend Rollins when I was the architect of Desert Highland. Uh, that is a great community up there that I would hope we can improve relationships with. My relationship is always great. And I would suggest that everyone not focus on tearing things down, let's work together, try building things up. That's not so easy. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And the next speaker will be Karina.
Hi, um, uh, my name's Karina. I'm, um, a, a local from the Coachella Valley, born and raised on the eastern end of the valley. Um, I'm Mexican, Ecuadorian and Filipino, so lots of culture. Um, and I'm actually calling just to, um, share like a little personal experience, ooh, sorry, I'm getting emotional, um, with my work in Palm Springs. Um, I used to work at the Palm Springs Art Museum and I don't know why I'm so emotional, sorry. Um, and while I worked there, uh, we had this incredible exhibition filled with lots of, uh, um, BIPOCs, lots of beautiful indigenous artists. Um, and at that time, I, I'm not sure what happened, but one of the indigenous women, uh, artist, Wendy Redstar, she came and she was supposed to have like a community workshop. Um, something happened and she asked to cancel her contract. I don't know, there's no specific, uh, she, she canceled her contract. She also asked for her art to be pulled. Um, um, there was no, uh, uh, again, I don't know the detail, um, but kind of the, um, the sentiment then working at the museum kind of dropped, especially for kind of women, brown women. Um, um, I tried to bring it up to HR and when I brought it up to HR, I was told that, um, they couldn't believe that someone could be racist towards me. Um, and, oh, and I just think that when we're talking about kind of ways to move forward and someone mentions like culture and art and kind of the relationship that the city council has with kind of institutions that are, are, are big in their city kind of, when I think of Palm Springs, I do think of the Palm Springs Art Museum and kind of, um, the tourism that, that, that museum brings and, and how, um, how angry I am at them still. And, um, then when I was reading in my, in my exit interview, I, I kind of mentioned, um, that they didn't really do anything to then talk about race and inclusion, even though I did speak to all of the managers there and, and I will say there are some incredible people that used to work there, I'm not sure who works anymore. Um, but they kind of just canceled all conversations about race, race and diversity and inclusion. And then when I told HR my, my, you know, interview about that, they kind of just said, well, we don't see color, so, you know, we can't, you know, how, how can we move pa- you know, like it was just kind of a dismissing of, of kind of the conversation that I wanted there. Um, so I just wanted to bring that to the city council and hope that when they think about doing business with the Palm Springs Art Museum, that they think about kind of the, the pain that they bring, um, employees and, um, like locals. And I, um, I know other people experience things like me, but, um, uh, they're very scared of retaliation from the board. Um, and I, I found that really saddening also, um, that, um, that as individuals, even a lot of them have been let go now and I'd asked them to kind of speak up and they're all telling me that they feel like fear of retaliation and, which makes me nervous because I am, I'm here, I, I moved back after seventeen years away. I was in the big cities and, and I, I do want to be a, a part of the change of Palm Springs and the rest of the Coachella Valley, um, especially for me being Latina and the things that, uh, Latinos, we have to face about our own racism with the black community and, you know, these are all things that I want to be a part of. And so, um, I just wanted to share that kind of personal experiences with my experience. Thanks.
Thank you. And, um, there are some people who are texting me, um, through the session, uh, to, uh, provide public comments, so this may look a little out of order, but the next speaker is Carol Davis.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Carol Davis and I was born and raised in the city of Palm Springs. Um, I served on the Parks and Rec Commission for about six years. I served on the Black History Committee for about seven years. Um, and I've just been a part of this, this community. And I first would like to start and speak on the police. Um, I've attended a meeting or several meetings at the Gateway, uh, Desert Highland Community Meeting, and I think one of the past speakers spoke about how one of the, or some of the officers, when they come to those meetings, they don't give the same respect that they give to other meetings you might see them throughout the city. And at this one particular meeting I was a part of, there, it was at a time when there were, there was a murder and I guess the police officers weren't able or still hadn't been able to solve the murder and they were frustrated. And you can see the frustration from the moment they walked in that room. When they walked in that room, that room was intimidating. They came out with soft spoken in the beginning and as the meeting went on, um, it was more about, um, how people are responsible to come up and help them solve these problems and if they don't help them solve these problems, these problems won't be solved. And it got to the point to where one of our elder residents spoke to them and said that they don't feel safe coming to them and even calling them because they've had situations where they've called the police and told them before they came out, "When you come out, do not come to my door. Do not come to my door because I live in this community, everybody in this community knows me, I'm a el- I'm a elder, elderly person living in this home alone and do not come to my door." What did they do? The minute they came out, they came and knocked on their door and asked them what was going on, going through everything they had spoke about on the phone and therefore they did not feel safe. Now, I don't know if this happens all the time, but the reason why I'm bringing this up is because of the disconnect. I understand how everybody's trying to come together and talk and reason and this, that and the other, but if you have people that are just there to police and not understand the community and don't want to be there, there's no need to send in the mouth because it's only going to be back and forth, back and forth, butting heads. Back when my kids were, were younger, my ex-husband and I were a part of the Police Activities League. Our kids participated with police officers, um, Officer Coons, Walter Coons and Javier Garcia ran the program. These kids from, were diverse. You had kids who came from means, kids who didn't come from means, people who were just working class, but these parents came together to help coach. These kids knew the police officers, they had their cell phone numbers, these officers checked up on them at school, they practiced with them every week, so if they had problems, they had a connection. Now, if there's this disconnect and you just want to police and, you know, it, it just, it just doesn't work and I think that would really help. So, um, that's one of the things. And as far as I'd like to speak about the statue, I mean, if we move this statue, we move the statue. If we don't, tell the truth, tell the whole truth, because that's what's wrong with our history as it is. We want to separate black history from American history and it's all our history, but we want to halfway, one-sided tell the truth, tell the truth and that's it. When we bring our kids in front of that, in front of City Hall, the place for the people and our kids are on a field trip and standing in front of that statue taking pictures, they need to know who this person is, not just one side of it. So that's all I got to say. Oh, one more thing, one more thing before you cut me off. I would like to speak about the whole recognition of people of color in the city and the Lawrence Crossley. I mean, you know, we just have that mural painted, um, of George Floyd. Now, George Floyd isn't from here, this is true, but why is that the only thing we have to look at in Palm Springs of someone of color? You know, when I pass by, it's like a shock when I get to the light there and then once I pass it, I have to smile because that's the only thing we have. That is the only thing we have and we go back and forth about the Lawrence Crossley name. Where are we at in the historical society, in the historical soc- society? When you go downtown and ask somebody about where's the black people in the city of Palm Springs, they have to go dig in the archives. You got to come back next week. We're not there. And if the only thing we have to go back to is section fourteen, we're bigger than that, we're better than that, we're more than that. So that's basically all I have to say, but I do have to thank, um, the council people for putting us together and I'm glad that everybody found, found it important now to show up, so thank you.
And the next speaker will be Jill Scott.
Everybody, thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to speak to this our city council. Uh, thank you for the wonderful jobs you guys do in each, uh, in whatever you all put together. Um, as a resident of Palm Springs for the last twenty-seven years, you know, looking at racism, being also a migrant, being a person of color, living here for the last twenty-seven years, um, I do feel, I really feel the pain that our minority communities are speaking with. Uh, it is history. Yesterday was history, tomorrow is a mystery. We have to live in the present and we are faced with so many challenges in our present. Our children are asking us questions about the present. We can't have history that gives us so much of pain. We need to move past that. So that is something, oh, I think it's common sense for us as, uh, community members who are invested in this community to look at the pain and hear the pain of, um, minority communities and do what is responsible, because we don't know what tomorrow is going to bring. My next concern in my city, being a, a six years serving the, uh, city of Palm Springs as, um, as a human rights commissioner, being an advocate for the disabled and, uh, focusing on mental health in our community, my next concern for my community is our homeless population, uh, mental health in our communities. It is very important. We are asking, I, uh, in this forum, we, we, uh, we heard Zach speak, we had Craig speak, David, Alexis, uh, and we, oh, and Janelle, you have a wonderful story, that should be a podcast. Uh, we, we heard these people talk about mental health, the police department, how we, it is not about changing, uh, it is not about defunding, it is not about, uh, destructive things, but we need to, it's time we change the game, that we have to change the models of services we provide for this city. And mental health is such a, on right on top of the line. If we don't address mental health in our community, this city will lose a lot of finances and there'll be so much of judicial abuse within our city. Um, I am just speaking about the people I serve as a mental health professional who are on psychotropic drugs and such destructive things that I cannot believe that, um, such a small city, such a small community has so much of its going through the street. Um, our homeless population, sixty percent of our homeless population are not registered voters in our cities, they're out of our cities. Uh, we have, um, we have cannabis shops, uh, taking social security checks, EBT cards and recycling their cannabis to the homeless population. Again, I don't know what the, uh, where law enforcement, where they, uh, investigate these things, but it is very, it's a dire situation. Uh, we need to address these things as our, as a community. Mental health, we need to have a mental health desk. Our police staff have to, us can be involved in policing, but we need to have systematic change- change in how we deal with the wellness checks in our population. Where we need to have people who are, who are, um, who have the ability to go out and work with our mental health population. And again, like I said, our mental hea-, uh, our homeless population are in that, uh, category of mental health needs. So, as a community, this is something that we need to address. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, and the next speaker will be Orin Jackson.
Hi, how are you? Um, I've heard, I've heard a lot from the participants about moving forward, um, uh, I guess getting past the past. Look, um, it's difficult to move forward if we fail to address, uh, the sins of the past, um, uh, and tell the truth. Um, I heard a gentleman speak of, uh, Frank Bogart and, uh, and, uh, high regard, and he also, um, mentioned, uh, Section 14, and he talked about doing, uh, uh, good for the greatest amount of people. Um, Frank Bogart, the racism attached to him is well documented. The, uh, atrocities that took place on Section 14 are well documented, and, um, and as this person justified this, you have to understand that when these people were moved from Section 14, uh, as Deita Crawford so eloquently put, the land deeds, uh, did not allow these folks to go out into the community and purchase homes. Many of these folks moved to Riverside area, Banning, um, and some of the, uh, other areas on the outskirts of Palm Springs. Um, this hits home with me because my grandmother, uh, was the first African-American person to purchase a home in desert Highland, um, area in nineteen fifty-eight. And at that time, that was considered a, uh, county land, and, uh, few residents, but they were all white. Um, and as my uncle, who was a veteran, uh, left the army, um, he could not secure a loan in this particular area. Uh, he actually had to go to Los Angeles and, um, uh, receive a loan there. And, um, when folks, uh, wanted to view the, the lots and the land in the northern part of the community, uh, many times they would have to take them out there at night just to avoid scrutiny from the, uh, other, uh, residents. And when they were able to secure a loan, when they were able to begin building, the residents ran the builders off the land, my grandmother had to get them to come back. Uh, and of course, um, uh, once they were able to, uh, uh, build this property, uh, other African-Americans began to come to the community, and then, as history, uh, generally tells us, once that happens, then there's, uh, a situation called white flight that takes place. And, um, and as these people in this community move forward, um, it's been at least twice, particularly, I remember a time in the emin-, uh, eminent domain, and again, the gentleman talked about doing the greater good for the greatest amount of people, and I found that to be an interesting statement, given the fact that this community is in the northern, the most northern part of the city, and why that land would be, uh, even considered for eminent domain. So, until we, you know, address some of the sins of the past, it's kind of like dropping bricks on someone's head and telling them that it's raining. Um, and, um, and above all, once this white flight took place in this neighborhood, you know, it really, uh, created a situation called redlining, and I know you guys are a lot familiar with that. And so, when we talk about, uh, segregation, uh, the redlining created really a de jour, uh, uh, segregation, uh, situation in the city, and, um, and those institutional practices, uh, really drew the line between the have and the have-nots. And so, uh, no, we no longer need to, uh, segregate people in this community, uh, it's done through redlining. And so, um, you know, maybe somehow finding a way to create some opportunities, uh, as, uh, Mr. Crawford so, um, uh, eloquently, um, put it, uh, just a situation of equity. And, um, and, uh, and in terms of, uh, the policing in the city, uh, that's also been, uh, well documented over time, and, uh, and I just want to share one thing with you before I go. Um, my cousin who's on, uh, line right now, his mother called the police on her own son because he was on drugs and just destructive behavior, and she really thought that by, uh, incarcerating him, it would give him an opportunity to get clean, it would give him an opportunity to maybe even move on with his life by receiving some help. And so, when they picked him up, they told him who called the police on him. And so, as Carol Davis talked about, uh, the, the lack of communication, uh, possibly the distrust, you know, um, it's those situations, uh, that are also well documented. We don't have enough time to go over all of those. That creates rifts between, uh, a community and those protecting the community.
Thank you. And, um, based on, on messages, the next speaker is Corinne Griswold.
Hi, I'm just retired as a teacher for Raymond Cre Middle School, which, um, I'm really sorry to quit, I quit because of the virus, but I really love teaching history there. And I'd like to propose, building on what Carol Davis said, that we put up a statue to Lawrence Crossley. Um, in fact, most, what I know about Lawrence Crossley, um, besides that he built the Crossley Track, is from Frank Bogart's book, that he came here in nineteen twenty-four, he was an investor in, um, in the hotels, he built the Crossley Track, he designed golf courses. So, um, I think there should be a monument in Palm Springs, in Fruit City Hall, to somebody like Lawrence Crossley. Um, and, um, that's pretty much what I wanted to suggest. Thank you.
Thank you, and the next person will be Karen Joy.
All right, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to let people know that it's not only the black community that gets stopped when they're on parole. My son is no angel, but he was in jail for about six months, and then every time now, and honestly, even when he was in high school, because he's very, very tall, he's six foot eight, he stands out in the crowd, and the cops are constantly picking him up, constantly. It's a harassment that, he has a twelve-year-old son, and when his son is in the car with him, he's scared to death every time he sees a cop car, because he thinks that the cops are gonna take his dad to jail. So, uh, it's not only black people. I think that, uh, the police should have better things to do than to, um, actually pick on people that, um, may have not been perfect citizens, but he's got a good heart, and there's no reason for this. That's all I got to say.
Um, with that, um, if anybody else wants to speak, uh, if you could raise your hand, I do see one more. Um, and then for those of you who are, um, calling in, um, if you hit star nine, that will indicate to me that you also want, want to speak. Um, and I see one, uh, the person who, uh, ends with three, two, three, uh, you're the next speaker.
Hi there, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Um, thank you so much for having us and for opening up discussions on race relations in the community. Um, I am Andrea Romero, I'm twenty-six years old, I'm a first-generation Latina, I'm the first person in my family to go to college, and, um, last August, I moved to Palm Springs because I got an internship with the art museum. And so, I was really excited, this was my first real internship, um, after college, and so after my internship, I was hired full-time, so first real job after college. You know, I really felt like I was getting my life going, I got my first apartment, I spent all my savings moving to Palm Springs. Um, but unfortunately, under the management that came on last August, um, the Palm Springs Art Museum turned out to be a really toxic space, especially for people of color. Um, I don't know exactly how specific I need to get, but I will say that, um, you know, there's a lot of employees that have been suffering, and there's a lot of employees that will not speak up even after they've been furloughed, even after they've been fired, um, because, you know, they don't want to lose their job. There's not a lot of job security in the desert for arts people, because there's only one museum. And so, if that museum is, you know, being unjust, especially to the marginalized community, I really feel like we need to do more, we need to put more pressure on this institution. This institution presents, uh, represents the entire Coachella Valley, it is the leading arts institution in the Coachella Valley, and so, um, you know, as an art institution especially, that sits on sacred Keweeia land, there should be no tolerance of any kind of institutional racism on any level. Um, with my experience there, I found that HR does not protect employees, but it only protects executive staff. Um, I dealt with microaggressions for months, and then finally, I requested a meeting with HR. Four days later, I was fired over email. And I, um, yeah, that was in October, and it's been a hard healing process. I don't know if I'll ever, you know, um, want to work at a museum again, even though this has been my career path for years, and, um, it's really hard because, um, you know, unless you're in the museum, unless you, you're, you work there, you're a volunteer, and people don't understand the kinds of relationships and the kinds of tensions and everything that's going on under the surface. Again, new management, the new CEO, the new chief curator, um, I was there before, and I was there after they came on, and I felt the shift immediately. Um, you know, the museum was never perfect to begin with, but surely after, after these people came on, it, it grew more and more and more toxic, and there's so many, so much evidence of that, but I don't know if HR is recording all of this. I don't think so, considering the fact that when I went to them for help, they fired me on behalf of the person that I was experiencing microaggressions from. So, this, this is really just unethical, this is, um, something that really needs to be audited. Museums all over the country are raising their standards, they are pledging to take action beyond words, they are coming out with concrete plans to, um, make sure that institutional racism is never again present, you know, in the, in these environments. These are learning environments, these are community environments. And this museum, again, sits on sacred Keweeia land. So, where is the justice for the people of color, you know, that, that are suffering because of this institution? This institution has Native American art all over their walls, they pride themselves in having Mexican modernist connect, collections that are, you know, comparable to some of the best collections in the country. So, why do they treat their employees of color like trash? That's my question. And my other question is, why do they keep getting away with it? I know I'm not the only person that complains about the museum, but for some reason, nothing ever changes. Whenever someone does feel brave enough to speak up, you know, they might get an apology at best, and then everything slaps under the rug all over again. When I got fired in October, I didn't have the money to move back home until January. I depleted my savings, um, I had to break my lease with my first apartment that I'd ever, I'd ever had, and now I'm in debt, that is now in collections, I don't know when I'll be able to pay it back. And again, this is the consequence of having toxic management, toxic people in leadership. This is the consequences of having an HR environment, I mean, an HR department that is not adhering to laws, to standards. Um, there's a whistleblowing, um, policy, right? And so, I know for a fact that two people who overheard how management was treating me on a daily basis and how they were talking to me as the curatorial assistant, they overheard, and I know for a fact that two people who had been there for years before me, they both complained anonymously to HR. And that's what gave me the courage to go after months of experiencing these aggressions, to go to HR and say, "Hey, you know what? Something is happening, and you know what? I'm not okay." And you know what? I have been staying quiet, because this is my first job ever, this is my first real job, I did not want to lose that job. So, I bit my tongue, I put up with so much, I put up with my manager asking me if I'd ever finish a college paper, and a lot, many, many, many other things. But anyway, um, I'll wrap it up. I really want to see the museum audited by a third party, I want specifically HR is upholding white supremacy, they're upholding racism and discrimination, and, um, you know, lastly, I mean, just to sort of corroborate all of that, the only people in leadership positions now are, there, there, there are no minorities there in positions of leadership, there's no one there to vet for people like me. The chief curator, um, and the only curator left right now that hasn't been furloughed is a, she's a white woman who is curator of Native American art and has been for the past twenty-three years, because nothing ever changes at this museum. So, I want to see the museum audited, I want to see the city putting pressure on the museum, I want HR to be, you know, audited by a diversity agency, I know it's been done at many, many other museums, uh, for example, Mocha in Los Angeles, where I also have worked, received, um, you know, a third-party kind of audit for their HR department, and many, many, many trainings. So, um, thank you so much for listening, um, and I really hope that, you know, we see some action.
Thank you. Um, for anybody else who's still, um, in the session, if you have not yet spoken, um, and you're not sure how to raise the hand, if you could just unmute your mic and indicate so, um, otherwise, I, I'll give you a second to do that if you have not yet spoken. So, Mr. Mayor and Council, um, I have received a couple inquiries, if you would be willing to allow, um, I've received two inquiries, if you would allow follow-up, um, comments, um, and I defer to the council, uh, for that direction.
I, I think since there's only a couple, we should hear from them, if others agree.
Yeah, I mean, we have two, I'm fine with doing that. I don't think we want to open up for everyone to follow up on other people's comments, because obviously people wanted to be able to share their things, but I'm fine with the, you know, ones who already requested it.
Okay. I'm sorry, Lisa, uh, did you want to speak?
I said I agree.
Okay, so, uh, Janil Hunt, if you would like to go ahead and provide some follow-up comments?
In closing, I would like to thank the mayor and the city council for opening the dialogue. Everyone joined, everyone that joined today has shown their love or their passion for Palm Springs, whether it be the desert Highland Estates area or other areas. Um, I would like to reiterate the wrongs that need to be addressed, or in order for healing to begin. If you truly want to make amends and make the wrongs that need to be addressed, heal, we need to start by looking at the statue that's in front of the city hall. Do your own research, start with the Attorney General's report for Section 14 in nineteen sixty-eight. There's nothing wrong with you going out there and looking for stuff. And let's get the Lawrence Crossley name changed all the way through, not just part of it, but all of it. Let's recognize what black people have done here in Palm Springs. Changing a name is not anything that's would hurt anybody or hinder anybody because of an address change, but the wrongs need to be made right. And really take a look at the training for our police department, and let's really, truly be genuine about our heart and whether we are doing the right things for the right purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, and, uh, the last comment I have is from Elizabeth Delores. Elizabeth, you're live with the council. Elizabeth, you're live with the council.
And I want to go ahead and just comment on the fact that on the last time that we were talking about our budget, there were phone calls made from people that were not residents of Palm Springs. And I would like to ask the city council, the city, and everyone who is in charge of taking in comments and phone calls to try to somehow distinguish the actual residents that have actual residency or are involved with the city because they either actually live here or pay their taxes here in our city. And instead of us taking accounts of, you know, so-and-so's dad or, you know, I live in Palm Desert, but I, like, can we just make sure that we somehow figure out a way where we can have only city people, like residents of the city of Palm Springs, speak on our city that we provide for, that we give into, that we live in? I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Have a wonderful day.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I don't see anybody else desiring to speak, and those were the two people that asked for follow-up comments.
Great, well, first, thank you, everyone who spoke. Thank you to staff, Mayor Proton Holst, Councilman Rick Garner, for your work in organizing this. I know you didn't, we're gonna talk about this Thursday, so I won't make any comments. I think we should all really take this in. There was a lot of really personal comments, and I really want us to take the time, as you both do. I think that was a really good way for us to address it. And I hope everyone will join us. I just want to let people know, council is starting at 5 o'clock on Thursday night this week. So, we are starting an hour earlier. So, I want to make sure people are aware of that, and we'll post that as well. So, thank you, everyone, have a great rest of your weekend. And I think on behalf of the whole council, we really appreciate your participation from all who spoke and all who just called in and listened and learned. Bye, everyone.
Goodbye.